Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, April 4th, 2024. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2024 through January 2025. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 8th, 2024. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 12th, 2024 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting has also been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by board members and staff. Those wishing to comment when the time comes, those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions button or the raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. A countdown clock will be used to help speakers keep track of time, and speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Excuse me. Carrie Phillip, will you call the role, please?
Certainly. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka? Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Sorry about that. Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Jack, you're...
Here, sorry.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First up, we have announcements. Are there any announcements from board members or staff? Not seeing any hands go up. Next on the agenda is subcommittee reports. I don't think we have any this evening. Is that correct, Carrie and Justin? Yeah, none this evening. Okay. So we have an application hearing for RB Homes LLC. This is continued from February 22nd. This is a preliminary and finer, final major site plan with variances. It's at 375 and 377 Turhune Road, block 7401, lots 4.01 and 4.02. And this is file number P2323-309P. So, Mr. Lesko, will you sort of set the table by reminding the board what were the issues that were issues and questions left to answer and resolve this evening? And then after you finish, I will turn to Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weissman because they did an updated engineering and zoning report so they can hit the high points of that, too.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Mueller, please, yeah.
Just a quick question for Jack and Freddie. Have you listened to the tape of the first session?
I have. I have not.
But Freddie, you have?
I have, and I signed the affidavit.
Okay, good, great. Um, Jack...
Well, Jack, congratulations. You have a free night. Bye.
Bye.
Yeah. Thanks for showing up for announcements and...
Well, I told him he could still participate, just not vote.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, up to you, Jack.
Thank you. I'd like to stay if I may.
Oh, sure. Okay, Jerry, thanks for that. Is there any other, anything else you need to do? I know you need to swear in. Well, I guess you've already sworn in, Justin, and our
Yes.
others for this application. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, board members and members of the public. Just a reminder that this application is at 375 Turhune Road and is a site plan application to build 24 market-rate townhouses and six designated affordable apartments in the AH7 zone, which was created as a result of a settlement negotiation with the applicant following the adoption of our third-round housing element and fair share plan. There was probably over three hours of discussion at our February 22nd meeting and testimony from the applicant. This application involves variances for the facade fenestration on the townhouses or the ratio of solids to voids, so walls to openings, doors and windows essentially, on the end cap part of the townhouse buildings and the part that's facing the center courtyards within the four buildings. There are two other variances for the location of the signage for the development and the maximum building height in terms of stories. Since that meeting on the 22nd, we've received from the applicant revised architectural plans and Sheet 5 of their engineering plan set. As a result, like the chair said, there's a revised engineering and zoning memo describing the changes. Additionally, we've received a memo from the municipal Affordable Housing Manager to address some of the outstanding questions from the last meeting with data on the interest and demand in for-sale affordable housing in Princeton. And finally, we've also, we've uploaded all those aforementioned documents as well as the settlement agreement in color to better show the exhibits that are a part of it. Previously, it was only uploaded in black and white, so trying to fix that. The topics that we discussed at the last meeting and are still outstanding from that meeting include the redesign of the architecture on the townhouse buildings related to that variance for solids to voids, and that's been changed with the revised site plans. Another topic was fence materials for the fence to the east of the site near the homes on Grover Avenue, which has also been revised. The status of the existing magnolia trees, HOA operations and documents and how that will run, excuse me, with the new buildings. I don't believe we've received any information on those, so the applicant is expected to testify to them, as well as how parking spaces will be assigned to the affordable units. And I understand a representative from Toll Brothers was going to be here to answer some of these questions tonight. That's, those are the topics that I have, the major ones from the last meeting that I recall. Dan and Derek may want to discuss their supplemental memo prior to turning it over to the applicant.
Justin, the one thing I would add is David has raised at the first meeting the question of the timing of the roadway so that it's not built and then used as construction access afterwards, which would be very damaging, probably have to be rebuilt. I think that's worth discussing as well.
Certainly. Thank you, Jerry.
And to just very briefly point out the gist of the memo from the Affordable Housing Official. That person acknowledged that there is absolutely demand for for-sale affordable units in Princeton. There's a waiting list, a long waiting list for that type of unit. That question came up, and you referenced that memo, but I just wanted to point out what the gist of it was.
Thank you.
So, Dan Weissman and and, sorry, and Derek, excuse me. Can you just hit the high points of your updated memo, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. If you don't mind, Derek, I'll just run through it quickly. If there's anything else you want to add on, just so we don't have to buy for cable what we're running through here. But the ground floor entrances to each townhouse and unit that faces the new access roadway, that entrance is now relocated to the western facade on that access roadway. By doing so, the courtyard facades have slightly reduced in ratio of solids to voids from 27.2% to 26.9%. The side facades have also been slightly modified to add windows, and that increases the ratio from 14 point, I'm sorry, from 11.6% to 14.8%. The code requires that the percentages be equal, the ratio be equal between the courtyard fronting facade and the facade on the access road, so the variance still exists. However, that distance between those two numbers has been reduced. Some minor changes to the site, there are picnic tables that have been added to the lawn areas to the east of the first driveway. An additional five-foot-high cedar fence has been added to screen the utility meters area adjacent to the access road. And the fence on the Grover Avenue side has been revised, reflects a six-foot solid cedar fence. So again, that variance still applies, although it has been reduced. There's still variance relief required for the stories of the buildings, and there's also, just to clarify, a building height variance required for the southernmost townhouse building, where 45 feet is required, and the building height proposed is 47.42 feet.
Okay, thank you. Dan, Derek, anything to add?
No, sorry, I lost contact there for a minute. Apologize, but I don't have that. Thank you.
Problem at all? Good. Okay. Then, on behalf of the applicant, I guess I would ask or invite all of you to turn on your cameras. Hi, Mr. Tar. You were first with your camera. I assume you're also first to to speak on behalf of the applicant. You want to get us going?
Surely.
Chris, let me just ask you, do you have any new witnesses?
Yes, yes.
You want to swear them in? Should we swear them in?
There's just one. Alex Chotalal from Toll is here with us. Alex, you want to be sworn in?
Yeah.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name.
Alex Chotalal, C-H-O-T-A-L-A-L.
Thank you.
Can we go ahead and do Mr. Chotalal's qualifications at this point?
He's a fact witness. His role at Toll is as the land entitlements manager for New Jersey. So he's going to talk about the HOA documentation, that's all.
Okay, so that does not require a qualification. I have to admit, I was assuming he was an architect, so you're saying, and Mr. Mueller, you agree, that doesn't require, okay, great, go ahead.
Very good. So we're going to start off as we did last time. Daniel has a new set of slides. The last time, we marked the slide deck as applicant one or A1. If this could be A2, we could mark it and Daniel could proceed to put that up. What we're doing is, so we've listed each of the items that were to be discussed, and he and Jim Kamalik and Jeremy, the architect, are all going to comment on them, the things that were on the list from last time.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Good evening. My name is Daniel Barsky, and my team and I are back from our last Planning Board meeting, which was on February 22nd. We covered a lot of information on our last meeting, and following presentation is going to specifically address the questions and concerns that came up from the previous meeting. As you already know, Toll Brothers is under contract on this property to develop it, to provide both market and affordable units, both for sale. And I'm emphasizing for sale because, you know, we do believe that there is a very high demand in Princeton for both affordable and market units. So here's a rundown, a general rundown of the items we'll be covering. And for my part, I'd like to start by reviewing the settlement agreement and the timelines of actually how we got to this point. So we originally negotiated the settlement agreement with Princeton on November 20th of 2020. To the left of your screen is the negotiated site plan concept with the six affordable units between the two buildings that from on Turhune Road and four rows of six townhomes each going towards the rear. There's a proposed new access road that is going to be connected to the shopping center with alleyways to access the proposed community and green space in between. And as we testified in the previous meeting, our proposed site plan is consistent with this concept plan. Also included in the settlement agreement is the following section, which I've illustrated on the right, addressing the conceptual architectural rendering for the two affordable buildings referenced as Exhibit C. And you can see here on this slide are the affordable buildings that were attached as part of the settlement agreement, Exhibit C, and they were prepared by Dan Berkowski, who is a local architect who specializes in design and implementation of affordable housing. The intent of the design at that time, which was approved by the municipality as part of the settlement agreement, was to have these affordable units help blend and then transition from the existing surrounding less intense use to the higher density use in the area. And there is clear language in the settlement agreement to keep the design consistent with these drawings. At the time of the settlement agreement, Dan Berkowski spent time to study and identify prominent features of single-family homes in the direct vicinity on Turhune and Grover and implement these design features from the surrounding neighborhood into the proposed affordable building design. This rationale and documentation, which is provided in front of you, is also displayed as an exhibit as part of the settlement agreement. And to clarify our responsibility in constructing the new access road, the settlement agreement also specifically addresses this. Reading straight from the settlement agreement, Princeton shall make the easement available to 375 Turhune and 375 Turhune shall, at its cost and expense, construct the roadway path landscaping and site improvements within the easement area for contemplated herein. For your reference, the new access road is illustrated on the slide to the left-hand side of the screen. The actual road, the new access road, was engineered by wind developers. It was reviewed by staff and approved by the board as part of the wind application. The parts of the road that are shaded in red and green in this illustration fall within the municipal easement, referenced in the settlement agreement, and will be built by the applicant. The little tail end, the blue-shaded part of the road that is on Wind's property, shall be built by others. We've already had conversation with Wind, with Edens, and other surrounding neighbors about coordination in constructing the roadway and corresponding timelines. Most of the questions revolve around a timeline for us to start the work, and of course, we're waiting for the Planning Board approval before committing more accurate dates. But we've already started the conversation with other interested parties. Toll has a lot of experience of coordinating bigger infrastructure like with associated neighbors and sites. And if there's more specific questions on specifically this, what I'll call the red part of the road that you see in the illustration, how it's going to be built, and Wind may have to access and go in and out, and how that's going to affect pervious pavement. We have someone that can testify to that and speak on that behalf, but there certainly seems to be a very sensible solution to that, and something that Toll Brothers has done a lot in the past. So moving on is from some of the items that we heard from the last meeting are, have to do around site plan revision, so I'm going to pass it on to James Kamalak, our engineer, who testified last time, and he's going to go over in more detail addressing specific items that were brought up from the February meeting.
And as these slides appear, who's ever testifying can give the page number of them, just for the record.
Sure.
Yeah, so I just testified to pages one through seven.
Yep.
And James is going to testify pages eight through 15.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Dan. This particular slide is just a summary of the overall unit and bedroom count. For consistency purposes, we discussed this at the last meeting, and we did include this on the revised site plan for accuracy and coordination with what the existing architectural plans are in terms of number of building units and number of bedrooms. So there's no change to the number of units or number of buildings, obviously, but for a housekeeping standpoint, we wanted to include this as a slide here. So Slide 9. This is the overall site plan, which shows the minor revisions and additions that we made subsequent to the last meeting. On the top of the page, you can see, which is the eastern boundary along the Grover Street, Grover Avenue properties. We specified the material of the six-foot-high privacy fence instead of the PVC as previously proposed. It'll be a solid cedar privacy fence, and that'll also follow the detail that we had previously submitted originally on the plans, but the material for that would be cedar. Proceeding to the left along this page here towards the front and Turhune Road, we have two elements. One is, there was a request at the last hearing to add a couple of additional picnic tables in this particular area at the end of the access driveway to the affordable units. And we've located those and shown those standard, two standard picnic tables size to scale right in that local area, which will be suitable for them in that location. And then additionally, as per what Justin had mentioned at the outset of the meeting in terms of the parking area for the affordable residences, we note on here, and it's our testimony, that they'll be specifically numbered for each residence and assigned so that the residents of the buildings and those particular units will have assigned parking stalls, and they will be reserved for the occupants of the building. So there'll be signage for that, as well as marking on the pavement for each particular parking stall. And probably the most prominent change, although minor here along the access road, there was no change to the building or any of the additional ancillary, significant ancillary features in the site plan, but the entrance to the townhomes, as Mr. Weissman mentioned previously, that came from the courtyard into each of these townhome buildings was relocated to face the access road. So you can see the, at the bottom of the page, the orange entrances or sidewalks go to an inset porch and a front door to each of those units. So as requested at the last meeting, that change was made. And our architect will provide some supplemental testimony and exhibits as to the configuration and the overall appearance and context of the gable facades, what they look like, and further details on that. Next is a few minor landscape additions to the plan that were requested at the last hearing, and we've highlighted the updates in orange. And I'll start in the center of the page where the landscape buffer, again, mentioning that we have this landscape buffer that separates the Grover residences from the subject property, and again, there'll be a six-foot high solid cedar fence associated with a 15-foot-wide landscape easement. We did have some supplemental discussions since the last meeting with Mr. Dobremilsky, the board's landscape architect, relative to a couple of questions or comments, and one was, I believe, was Ms. Wilson had a request of the proposed landscape buffer include all native species. There were a couple of non-native species in this evergreen landscape buffer. One was the Norway spruce. The other was the Yoshino Japanese cherry, Japanese cedar. And we discussed that with Mr. Dobremilsky, and also reviewed the effectiveness of the screening relative to whether it is 100% native or not. And our number one concern is performance here, and with respect to that, we want to provide the screening, the buffering necessary and available to provide by incorporating the Norway spruce, which technically is not a native species, but it just does so well here in Princeton, and provides such effective screening and sort of robust foliage for this purpose that we'd like to keep that as part of the plan, and we just say that in the context of when we get to evergreen species, we're really limited in terms of the different species available to us from a native standpoint and perspective. So we would like to keep the Norway spruce since they do such a good job, and then with the Yoshino cedar, we discussed with Mr. Dobremilsky, replacing that with Green Giant Arpeviti, which generally are deer-resistant, do grow robustly here in Princeton, and will provide an effective screen, so we could sort of insert that as a species that's a little bit more in the context of what we see here locally, and at the end of the day, what's effective and works well. So that's that's another slight addition that we made to the plan. And up at the front of the property within the front yard, and I'll talk a little bit more about this on the next slide, those are the two magnolias within the front yard. And we may come back to this slide, but perhaps we can proceed, Dan, to the next couple of slides to further discuss this. At the last meeting, there was some questions about the two existing magnolia trees that are at the front of the property. And as you may recall, there was an overall design intent to maintain these trees because of their prominence on the property and work around them. Because of the geometric constraints on the property, the provisions for the space between the buildings, the stormwater management at the rear, as well as the 30-foot-wide drive aisles, and our effort to minimize any excess site improvements, sort of in a left-to-right direction, and to keep this condensed, we still do have impacts to these magnolia trees. So the second best option was to propose and investigate preserving them but relocating them. And this particular slide shows you in red, the two red Xs, where they are located. They have an approximate drip line or overall diameter of 25 to 30 feet, and that's illustrated by the dashed circles that are around each X, and it just gives you an idea that it shows you how much that does encroach within the footprint of the affordable dwellings, which need to go in that location, and we really don't have any flexibility just due to the front yard setbacks, the parking needed, and the other geometric constraints. If you go to the next slide, Dan? Yeah. So as part of this, the Toll Brothers and Mr. Dobremilsky and an expert landscape contractor, LMS, met out at the site in order to evaluate the feasibility of relocating these two particular trees, and as I previously mentioned, approximately 25... Uh, approximately twenty-five to thirty feet in diameter. Um, and the the landscape expert indicated that in order to relocate them. They would have to um. Use a large spade and basically excavate each tree and leave it with an approximate root ball of a ten-foot diameter. Um. And although physically it may be possible, there were some significant um concerns and impacts uh to making that relocation. Number one is. Um, an anticipation of low survivability just because of the size of the root ball and the overall size of the trees. Uh, typically, they indicated that. You would re- really require multiple years of pruning prior to a relocation. Uh, where this is going to happen relatively immediately. Um. That would have to be anticipated for several years in order to to cut the trees back to facilitate that relocation. Um, there's a thought that there's a concern when they are relocated of. Susceptibility in that transition to disease and pests. Um, and overall securing those two trees in their lu- locations just because of the size of the overall canopy. Uh, and the root ball from from wind and tying the trees down. Um. They don't have confidence, strong confidence, that they're going to be able to anchor those trees sufficiently just due to their size. Um, so in order to address this, address the concern of maintenance of um. Specif- specimen-type magnolias at the front of the property, the recommendation was made. To uh replace them not with two, but with three uh magnolia specimen trees. Within the the frontage portion of the property as highlighted on this plan, we put, you know, general areas that may be suitable. Uh, for those relocations at a six-inch to seven-inch caliper, still um subs- substantial and large trees, but. Um, a a solution that would provide sort of a lasting um. Effect on the property to maintain the magnolias and and it seems like that's the best. Uh, effort that can be made in order to achieve the result that was ultimately intended. I certainly defer to Mr. Dobremilsky. If he has any comments on that, you know, at at this time or when I'm finished with my testimony. Um, since he was present at the meeting and might also, you know, provide some observations for you on that point.
Uh, as. Dan, do I'm sorry, were you inviting him to?
I think it it may make sense if if.
Speak right now. I think so too, Dan. Can you um?
I don't know. I can't remember if I was sworn in or not, Jerry.
Let's be safe about it. So.
No, didn't you? He was sworn in.
Oh, okay, good.
So, yes, thank you. So everything that Jim just said was 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 accurate. Uh, basically, I I could add to that in addition to. Some of the concerns, we also, these trees are thirty feet wide, thirty feet tall. One is better than the other. Slightly wider, slightly taller. But the branching of them is such that they have low branches that go out very broadly and. Uh, in order to dig them with a tree spade, you'd most likely have to remove some of the lower branches because it would be. Almost impossible. I think it would be impossible to actually um bind them up. So that you don't damage them with a tree spade while you're trying to dig them. Um, and it was actually my opinion that in order to actually move them, you'd have to consider it almost like. A house or a structure, you would have to dig it, uh box it and move it with a crane. Uh, in order to move that, those trees and actually get them to live. And it can be done, but there's very few companies that do that. It's extremely expensive. Um. And it it's basically like house moving equipment. And then when you get down to it, what do you have? You have. Trees that quite honestly, for for what they are, they're not the best quality specimens to begin with. They do have some. Flaws in the structure of the tree with the branching, et cetera. And you put that all together with the additional concerns that that Jim had mentioned. And it became clear that you'd be much better off trying to find the biggest tree from a nursery you could find and planting it and. Uh, five or six years from now, you'd end up at a better place. Um, so that was the discussion. The landscape contractor looked, searched and said that he can find. Six to seven-inch caliper uh magnolia magnolia grandiflora flora, which is what they are. They're southern magnolias. Um, and he could find those. They are available. And so based upon that, I believe that was. The the recommendation he was going to offer to uh Toll Brothers, who chose the representative that was there. And he would suggest that, and I kind of concur that 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 would be the most prudent way to um. Try and address the idea that the of having some type of. Uh, southern magnolia tree there because they are there and that was the discussion. So that's. That was the better way to go based upon what we looked at it. It would be ex- extremely expensive and risky to try and move those trees.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so just to continue on um relative to what was mentioned on the fence previously with specifying a solid cedar fence along the Grover properties. Um, again, we're referencing here the detail that is already included on the plan, but this is just to reiterate. Um, that specific material that was desired. That is slide fifteen. And slide sixteen is the revised townhome entry and facades, which would probably be addressed by Jeremy, our architect.
Uh, okay, thanks. Before we go to that, um, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to um ask a question about the parking. Um, for the for the affordable units. I do understand they'll be numbered and so forth. Um, but since these are for sale units. Um, I just don't know, you know, I would guess with rental units that there would be a sense that. You know, I uh an owner would have to choose whether they wanted one or two spaces. Because right now there are nine spaces. There are um six units, so some will get one, some will get two. But I'm wondering whether one really has to actually allocate. The uh spaces to the units if. Um, you know, if they're for sale units and. Would you do that based on bedrooms, like two cars for the three and two-bedroom units and one car for the one-bedroom units or? What what would be the approach to that?
Uh, the anticipation would be that. We would assign parking stalls to all of the units and then we have a few three-bedroom units and they would probably get two. Um, for each three-bedroom unit because of the increased number of bedrooms.
Okay, yeah, I I think it's one, three, and two, two bedrooms, if I remember correctly, but. Still, the principle, I think, is.
Yeah, they would be prorated based on on bedrooms to suit that need.
Got it.
Any other questions before we hear the architectural testimony, Mr. Lesko?
Mm-hmm. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And sorry, not to belabor the point, but uh my understanding from the last meeting is. There are nine spaces, one's ADA accessible, uh and two others are EV spaces. So will those three be divvied up in addition to the other six? Or, you know, is the ADA space going to be? Uh, for anyone who needs it, or the EV space is going to be for anyone who needs them?
Yeah, we why don't we take just, I was gonna uh get to the HOA question with Alex uh later, but as I told you. He's the entitlement manager and Jeremy is also with Toll Brothers. I'm going to invite the the two of them to indicate what they've done in other communities. Uh, and not speculate uh for.
Yeah, I can um, I can, I can speak to that. So there's nine spaces. Um, the ADA would also be there. So six would go to the individual unit owners. The ADA would be to whomever needs it. And we will have the two additional spaces. Those would be um EV-ready to whoever has um. Uh, an electric car. Uh, they can, it would, I guess it would be like temporary parking so they can charge their cars.
Would that be for anyone within the community or just within the uh affordable apartments?
Um, anyone, the way that it's set up for the for the charging station, so it would. Anyone in the community could use it, but we are doing EV-ready within every um. Every garage. So if someone wants to set up a charging station in their garage, it'll be the electric will be there for it. But the way that the EV works is it's really just on like an app or a card. You can pull up to it, um swipe into it and you would just pay for it. So anyone could use it. Um, but I would think anyone that has an electric car, they would just have one in their garage uh within the community.
Yeah, and I I actually like the approach of sort of saying the EV spaces. I mean, we could have four residents. Who have EVs and would and we would want them all to be able to access those so that those EV spaces really should be shared. Uh, between the units, I would think. So. The six non-special spaces, just one per unit and then um as you discussed for the other ones.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good.
Well, while Alex is here, uh uh could we just jump ahead and let him answer the HOA question that came up so that we can focus on the facades after that? Alex, you you good with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, if I can get just any exact questions, I don't just want to. Start spilling about HOA because we'll be here all night, but if there's an exact question, I'm happy to answer it.
Um, did you have a particular question in mind that had come up before, Mr. Tar, or I see Freddie Pearl Pearl Mutter's hand up, so maybe.
Yeah, the 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 question was a broad question. How uh these units are for sale? How is it administered after Toll sells all the units? And Alex has some experience with that, but uh uh we we could just speak to a J- question that comes up.
Okay, um Freddie Pearl Mutter and then Alvin McGowan.
Uh, yeah, I had a question um under the HOA rules. And actually, it's a little broader than that. And that is, I know that uh you're not putting solar in. But will solar be permitted if a particular homeowner wanted to do it?
Uh, the way that these units are set up, it'll all be so the HOA owns all the facades in the outside. Um, we are currently doing some um. Uh, like solar studies depending on how the units layout and if the sun would hit them right. Um, that would ultimately, it wouldn't, Toll Brothers wouldn't exactly do it upfront, but. If at a later date after we transition over to the homeowners and they have full. Control of their board, if that's something that uh they would pursue, they can more than, they're more than welcome to do that.
Okay, and then I also had a question about the charging stations, not station, but the chargers that you're putting into individual townhomes. Um, will they be the two forty B receptables for level two charging?
Uh, I believe so, yes. So yes, it'll be the two forty. I think that's the standard one, right?
I think so.
Basically, basically like a dryer outlet, yeah.
Yeah, uh, this is Jeremy. If I could jump in, it's actually it's a fifty amp circuit that's set up for that with a onto the panel. So it will accept any charging port that will run up to fifty amps.
Okay.
And I believe that does cover that.
Good.
Uh, from an environmental standpoint, obviously, I'm on the environmental commission as well as on this. Um, we would certainly like. To see if solar there, you know, solar there if it can be done.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, um, once we transition over the board, um, uh there are studies that can be done. Um, the HOA is, they're they're more than welcome to do that if they. If the members of the board vote to do it, once we transition um. The community over. But again, it's it's really just based on how the units are laid out and which way the roofs are facing, if it makes sense um. To have solar panels there.
So does that mean that the that the roof would be constructed solar-ready? Am I using the right term? Maybe Mr. Cohen can or or Ms. Pearl Mutter can.
Yeah, I, I mean. Uh, standard shingle, you know, asphalt chingles or fiberglass shingles are able to accept. You know, so the it's not a question of the roof, but really the question of being solar-ready has to do with conduit. To that would take, you know, the um provide for wiring to go from the roof. To wherever, you know, in one of the townhomes. Uh, there would be space for the, you know, for the equipment that would support the solar panels. Or possibly on the outside of the building. I suppose it doesn't have to be inside the building that the equipment would be located. But I think that um to Freddie's point, I think it'd be really good for the. Each row of townhomes to be solar-ready. Since the roof is owned by the HOA. You know, it should be an array that would go up across the entire roof, so you don't need to have a conduit for each individual unit. Uh, and you don't ha- need to have equipment for each individual unit, but there should be some provision um. That it be solar-ready in that in that regard, I think.
So it's a little bit more complicated than um than that being that the HOA does own. The roof, but actual setting up of like where the conduit would run and have in space for it. Um, none of that was contemplated as of yet on these. On these units. Um, Jeremy, I don't know if you have much experience on the space or location for that, but I know it wasn't contemplated. Um, for the for these units on what we're currently going to be looking at today.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have depth experience in that.
I I don't think it's a heavy, I don't think it's a heavy lift. So, I think, you know, they should be made solar-ready and. And let Toll figure out how to do that. Yeah, like I say, I think the conduit and the equipment can probably be mounted on the outside of the building. You'd probably want to do that on the east end of each row so that it wasn't, you know, public, so public-facing, but.
If it's as simple, um, I would hate to leave this meeting with a um. To push us into another meeting, but if it's as simple as just running a conduit. And we can confirm it, but if it's as simple as just running a conduit um from from the roof down to the building, so eventually uh solar panels can be installed. That would not be an issue for us. Um, if it goes into more detail than that, because I don't have. Uh, much experience in that in the solar panel area. Um. Then I guess we would, we like, we we're happy to discuss it uh later on. I just don't know how that would. How we can get past that like right now. Um, like I said, if it's if it's as simple as just running a conduit. We have no issues doing that. We can figure that out. Uh, I I don't know all the further details involved in it. Um. And I would hate just to say yes and then figure out it's a major issue that I wasn't contemplating right this second.
Right. Uh, what you pointed out is this, these would have to be communal or uh owned by the homeowners association. So which suggests there would be one conduit going down the, say, the far end of the building. So if we could just uh indicate uh if that's a kind of acceptable condition. That a the shingled roof would be, we uh uh later uh refitted to allow for the panels. And a conduit could be installed down the outside of the, at the end of the far end of the building, that would be fine.
What about the affordable housing units? Is there any possibility of putting solar in there?
That's the, that's an interesting question that the the way that the those work, the the. Buyers of the units are limited in the what they have to pay. Uh, but they likewise have their own responsibility for uh if they decided to have solar.
I I just want to weigh in on that, Freddie. The um, the town is working pretty hard. To get a community solar project that would support our. LMI, the, you know, lower and middle income residents, not just here, but, you know. Throughout the municipality and our various affordable housing uh locations. So I think that that might be the most.
Okay.
The the easiest way to address the needs of that group.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Muller, you're on mute.
Yeah, Chris, um Alex had indicated that. He they'd be men- memorable for putting the uh the conduit in now on the outside of the building, but I wasn't sure that's what you were saying.
Yeah, it it that it's it's like EV-ready in the garages. I mean, you know, it's 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 you go to a certain length. We we have. A shingle roof, so we know that the panels could be installed up there at a later date. But uh the to put a conduit on there.
Chris, Chris, if I can jump in, I I think the concern is. What the municipality considers solar-ready and Toll's capacity to be able. To actually meet that standard. If the request is, and my understanding is. At least my understanding in the past was to make something solar-ready is to run a conduit through the building on the inside or out. You know, inch and a half.
You know, inch and a half, two-inch piece of conduit so that you can later pull wire through to get to the roof to service the whole townhome row. If it's um framed that way in the resolution specifically to provide one conduit to each townhouse unit to the roof. I'm certain Toll has no objection to that. Um, um, so. If if that's what the if that's what the request is, I I I think that what we heard is they're they're fine to do that.
Yeah. Full full disclosure is there probably needs to be some connection to the electric meter. For each of the individual units as well, you know, some kind of conduit that would allow. Units to tap into the solar that's being generated.
Yeah, I I, yeah, hmm. I I think probably concern is when you and. And recently, I know because I've been managing more and more HOAs recently. To get twenty-four people on board that, yes, we want solar, no, I don't, who's gonna use it? Usually in an application like this, it's unlikely that you're able to get a whole community together to for the cost and the infrastructure involved and. How the power is split, who picks up what power, so i- it's likely a moot point. Um, I I just, I think Toll's concern is, you know, that we don't go down resolution compliance. And while this isn't quite solar ready, so if it's very clear what you guys want, then probably, and it's written that way in the resolution, Toll can say yes or no. But just not so it's open-ended. What does that exactly mean? Because, you know, I. Um, I personally don't solar panels myself, and sometimes solar ready means a piece of conduit, and normally that's the case on a single-family home. Running to the meter, you can tap into it later. And in this instance, in a townhouse application with um with a with a HOA board and. And many members, th- I think that's the struggle, so. You know, we can talk about it further or, you know, i- again, if it's a piece of, you know, if it's conduit. So far, my experience with Toll is they've been um. Uh, uh. My experience with Toll is that they've been very cooperative, so I I don't think, uh, you know, a couple pieces conduit is gonna. Hurdle them the wrong way, but let's just be very clear about what we want, that's all.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. McGowan and then Mr. Lesko.
Um, back to your Toll Brothers representative. Do you have experience with sales to very low-income applicants? That's first a general question.
Uh, me in particular, um, I I personally don't, but our sales teams, they do.
Um. And and that's going to include. The fees for for H HOA fees and other things that. And 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 your organization has has been able to successfully do that.
Yes, the way that we do it um throughout the throughout the state is we do it based on a percent interest, being that the. Um, the affordable units in a square footage is smaller than the market rate. So the market rate would pay a higher HOA fee than the affordable uh will because we do it on a percent interest. Um, and the fees, the bigger, the larger the square footage, um, the more they would pay. So a one-bedroom affordable would pay less than a three-bedroom affordable. But a three-bedroom affordable would then pay less than a full-out market rate home uh based on the square footage of it.
Okay, my question is a little different. It's not, it's not just affordable. Uh, again, I'm I'm asking specifically about very low-income affordable units.
Right.
As opposed to low, as opposed to low income, as opposed to moderate income.
So, uh, I think as you're aware, uh, as is in the case in rentals. A very low-income individual pays rent as a function of his or her income. The same is true with sales. The the purchase price for the unit wo- would be lower. For a very low-income individual, uh, uh, it would fit within the categories that they have. And I remind you that um Louis Heard, your Affordable Housing Manager, wrote a memo saying there is high demand in all three categories.
Okay, I have no problem with that. Again, what what this this is the concern. You have a very low-income applicant. That's gotta have the mortgage and every and the mortgage and the fees, even if they were, even if they are um. Reduced, if you will, from market. That person, you allow them to purchase it. But but just the total income is rather. It it, there's so much with the fees and even if you can get a mortgage. That it the person who buys that may not be able to to maintain that. They didn't have to either sell or you got to do something else with the unit. Now, I guess more I'm saying, and the reason I'm asking, I'm just making making you aware that that's that's could be an issue.
Uh, Toll tells us that they've done it elsewhere and it it's doable, you know, within the formula. And your housing manager says there's high demand.
I I think that the the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let Justin may want to shed some light on this, but the I don't think that the plan was for Toll. To be or the homeowner association to be managing these. I think the idea that these were gonna be managed in the same by the um. By the municipality and I I think that was. That was um what had been contemplated in the original discussions, but Justin, maybe you can shed some light on that.
Uh, I would have to check the settlement agreement for the exact language. Uh, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Okay, that's that's what you were gonna speak to. Anyway, I know, I don't, I don't know that we resolved it. Clearly in the settlement agreement, David, I don't know if you remember, but I I don't. I don't know that we that there was an expectation that Toll would be the ongoing manager of this program. I I think we thought it would be connected in some way to the that the municipality would be would have oversight.
I mean, generally in the municipality, our housing office does manage all the for-sale units, as I understand it. Others, others manage rental units, but our housing office manages the for-sale units.
Uh, Alex, you you have no problem with that, having the municipality do the management?
No. Now, are we saying the management of just the like selling it or the management as like a. Uh, like a like a HOA management perspective? I'm just confused on the word management. Um, because it does go into the lottery and the whole nine when we're selling it, which is what we do throughout the state. Um, being that it's part of the community, typically, we're just used to seeing. The affordable units just fit right into our HOA management and they have a seat on the board. Um, that's just typical of what we see around the state.
And I'm not sure, Alvin, you might know whether we have any other. For-sale units that are part of an inclusionary development. I think most of our for-sale units are not. They're, you know.
Uh, what about? Farm, I think at Greg's Farm.
Oh.
No, no, the 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 borough, the the borough, the former borough, Hamilton Avenue. Um, along, I can't think of the other street at the moment.
McLean has one.
Yeah, McLean, yeah, McLean's and McLean's the other area.
But but I think we own them, the town.
But I believe, I believe it's it's, uh, at least I thought they were. They are managed by the HOA, essentially by the HOA, not by municipality. Um, they're not, they're technically in some ways, well, well, I guess they can be co-uses, but. But they but they're sort of on the, they're kind of got their own a- arrangement as to what goes on.
Yeah, you remember the two-end units are middle-income individuals that don't qualify as affordable units. And the interior units were affordable units. They were all sold to individual owners and they have an HOA of their own. For all the ones that you referred to. So I think Toll and the and and Daniel are happy to have it either way. Uh, uh, the Toll's experience is that they're part of the that community, but um that's their experience.
Mr. Lesko?
Hmm, uh, and to answer uh the question earlier from Council President Sacks. The zoning requires the municipal housing liaison uh to market, administer and certify. Uh, the occupancy of the units to be paid for by the developer, uh, so it would be uh done by us in terms of. Selling the units. Um, I had a question uh about. Again, how the HOA will operate. I think it was touched upon a little by uh Mr. Chitotal. Um, I might understand, can you just go over again? How that breakdown will happen? Uh, is it the same number but based on the square footage? Uh, and then the for, you know, monthly HOA fees?
Yes.
How does that work with, I mean, there are going to be people in. Between the townhomes and the affordable units, including the very low-income ones, there will be people with very, very different economic levels. Uh, so if you could just describe how that has worked elsewhere.
Yeah, so basically what we do is we do a reserve study, um, and then we have our um, uh, the uh, uh. An accounting firm, they they cross-reference it, um, and then we come up with a monthly, like a monthly fee of what the total. Like a total monthly fee. And then there will be twenty-four units that will be paying the same amount. And then the affordable uh units, I think, based on their bedroom counts, because the square, the more bedrooms, the bigger the square footage. We do it on a percent interest. So, um, the one-bedroom would pay um a certain amount. The two-bedrooms would pay a little bit more and the third bedroom, they'll pay a little bit more. And then the twenty-four units, they will all pay the same, but almost like the bulk of it based on their square footage. It's just like a formula that we use, um, that all all thirty units total will come up to a hundred percent of what the monthly assessment needs to be.
Okay, what safeguards are in place to make sure that? You know, if someone's making twenty-two thousand dollars in one of the very low-income units versus the townhome where they're making much more. That it'll be more proportional than just space?
So we almost kind of like, um, we, for lack of better words, kind of back into certain numbers, right? We realize this amount of money is needed um to keep the HOA operational. We understand that the the monthly fee pays into um into the affordable total, what they uh what they're paying per month. Um, so we are conscious of what we're charging everyone to make sure we still. The ultimate goal is to sell the affordable units. We're not gonna make those so high where we can't even sell them. Um, so an exact safeguard, um, it it's really a number that we back into. That totals out what our monthly um assessment needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I if I understood what you just said. You do consider the HOA fees to be part of the. Affordable nut, if you will. In other words, it's kind of like utilities also are supposed to be. All of that together is supposed to be under that thirty percent of and of monthly income or annual income. So you're saying that the HOA fees are in that category. Not not a separate category like what we see sometimes with our rental units is that there are. You know, fees for clubhouse use, right, that um. That the developers say they're not required under New Jersey law. To give affordable units a discount on s- on certain on those fees, like for using the clubhouse. But you're saying at least the HOA fee will be part of the affordable package.
Yes, we are, we are conscious of that, um, of that total number, that total fee. So, um, that's why when we set it up, we do it based on a percent interest. Um, based on the square footage of the unit is how we determine what that um, what that number is.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Cohen, or?
Yeah, I mean, I what I what I think I'm hearing is that, you know, they may have a higher HOA fee than what we would think would be right. But then the rent would come down to make sure that the total monthly payment. Uh, not the rent, the mortgage, you know, would come down so that the total monthly payment fits within the affordability guidelines. So I to, as long as he's correct and that's the way that's gonna be handled. I'm fine with that because essentially it doesn't matter to us how much they're paying. As an HOA fee, as long as the entire monthly expenditure for mortgage. Utilities, HOA fee, all of that stuff taken together meets the affordability requirements.
And you're saying, Mr. Chotol, that, yes. That it is all taken together and that and that the HOA fees are not in any way. Outside of that thirty percent, um, okay.
That is correct, yes.
Good.
Okay, could we look at the facades?
Any other questions for Mr.?
Yeah, just.
Oh, or go ahead.
Yeah, is i- in terms of the HOA fees, the affordable units, um, when the when they're finally calculated, is that reviewed? By the mu- somebody that the municipalities that you work with?
Can I, uh, can I just jump in real quick? Th- there's. Very specific mechanics and procedures that have to go through the housing authority to be able to put these affordable housing units for sale. At that point, condo docs will be provided to the housing authority to be able to put them up for sale. Because they're gonna be the ones that are filling the units, qualifying the people. And they have very specific procedures and mechanics on how that's done. Toll Brothers has done this with other towns in the past in New Jersey. And whatever the state requirements are and through the housing authority, they're gonna meet those requirements to be able to sell them. I mean, is that a sufficient answer?
I think that that's accurate, that that's what I what, and that's what Justin said.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Not just for the audience and the other panelists for clarification.
I see.
The housing authority, which is, you know, another that's federally, uh, that's federal housing, it's uh the municipal housing office.
Yes, right, but ev- everything has to be done through that office and they have certain procedures and mechanics for it. And obviously, if someone wants to tell, if Toll wants to sell the units, they're gonna have to meet those requirements. Like David described with overall payments, they have certain budgets, you know, Toll's gonna have to obviously. Be able to meet those requirements to sell affordable units through the housing authority, that's all I want to add.
The housing office, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, Alvin?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I, I think I got it right. Um, you're not talking about the local housing. There's something called the Housing Authority in Princeton that owns and manages units.
No, I'm not right.
Housing Authority, which was the Affordable Housing Board, which which. Again, it's manages something, something different. You're talking about the requirements of the housing. With the Housing Board, that authority, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, most specifically, Mr. Heard, uh, the Affordable Housing Manager in his office, it does the math. That's that's where the work gets done.
A- and and we know from his memo that, you know, there there is demand for it. So, and and we know that the demand comes with certain requirements. For total overall payments and, you know, however that shakes out through their office. Is what Toll is gonna have to, or whoever is gonna build these is gonna have to uh comply with. And clearly, they're prepared to do that.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is uh going back to another topic, but. Um, in terms of the landscape plan, we did hear Mr. Dobremilsky comment on the Mandolias. I didn't hear him comment on the Norway spruce. Uh, that the applicant wants to retain, even though it's not native, and I'd like to hear what Dan has to say about that.
Sure, thank you. Uh, so, yeah, we did talk about, uh, I mean, how critical this buffer would be since. Uh, it it's pretty tight in there, um, these are fairly large tall units. And that, uh, the selections that would be available uh are kind of limited to try and address that concern. And some of the best choices to do that are Norway spruce and green giant arborvitie. Um, and that's, and when you add in the fact that there probably will be deer in the area, even though it is fairly dense, there's gonna be deer coming through here. Um, we kind of felt that that would be the better choices, that the native selections like holly and cedars. Uh, one, we're using them a lot already nearby, and two, um, they do not grow necessarily as quickly. Um, or as fully necessarily. Um or as fully necessarily, they're a little more difficult to grow. Uh you have to plant them at a smaller size, so they it would take time, longer time for them to grow in. And in this case, since we're relying on a fence and a single row of trees. It's felt like there needed to be something that was a little more robust. Um and that that's why we kind of concurred that that might be the most sensible solution um for this location.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you both. Um don't see any other hands raised, so Mr. Tarlet's move to. Your next witness, is that Mr. Green?
It is Mr. Green, so Jeremy was uh sworn in last time as an architect to the. Toll office and he's gonna show you some changes that were suggested to the uh facade facing the uh. The street.
Thank you.
Thanks. Right, Daniel, if you get, there you go, or on slide seventeen. Um this slide is a comparative between what was indicated. Uh or shown to the board um uh at the two twenty two hearing. Um where the front entrance to that particular unit was oriented off of the greenway, the courtyard. Uh which is over to the the rightmost of that leftmost uh gable elevation. On your right hand side is the redesign, uh we looked at several different um opportunities to. Um increase some of the fenestration, uh increase the solid avoid ratio. Um and introduce some additional elements along with the um the main objective, I think, was to get the side entry. Um up along with increasing some of the fenestration ratio. So um as Mr. Weissman noted, um on this particular elevation, we were. By adding windows, as you can see on this rightmost elevation, we added two windows um along the uh the rear. Uh of the unit to the the leftmost of that um elevation. Um we also put the side door with glazing uh in a recess. That would be accessed past the uh fire sprinkler room, which we moved closer to the greenway courtyard. Um so again, we increased the um the solid avoid ratio along the base. And on the two upper levels, even though we did remove one window um in the living room, great room on the second floor. Uh to accommodate the center uh white gable piece. Uh and we also did introduce a small gable piece um on the the rightmost side uh closer to the courtyard. Um the other thing that was noted is we did. Uh indicate a uh fence that's going to be of the same material um as the privacy fence to the east. Um that would be screening uh the area which we had indicated where the utilities were, it's five feet tall and we believe. Based upon the number of meters that will be required, it will cover, generally cover that along with any supplemental landscaping. Um so as as like I said, Mr. Weissman noted, we were able to increase the fenestration from eleven point six. To fourteen point eight, which is a fairly significant um increase. Um the uh. One other thing I wanted to note here is that in the planning memo. I'm sorry, the uh the planners memo and I think the engineers memo noted a discrepancy. On sheet PG four versus PG one point two, which is a portion of this. Um the PG one point two and the fenestration ratios are correct. The floor plan, um unfortunately, the architect missed. I'm updating that, we do have an updated floor plan at the end of the slide that should anybody wanna see that. It just shows um the correct window placements um on that uh that level, so. Um that's what I have to to describe in this particular slide. Um the next slide eighteen um just shows all the elevations. Um again, this shows um the courtyard elevation, um we made a couple of changes. Um again, we ended up reducing this uh by a tiny bit, it was because we basically removed the front door. Um and moved it to the side, so we didn't have that to count against the solid void ratio. Um and as you can see on the leftmost of the front courtyard elevation. Now there'd be a room or flex room behind the sprinkler closet that would serve as our. Uh you know, flex office space on the first floor that you would um have your drop zone, your front coat closet. Your stair up to the main level as well as your stair uh down to the parking at the rear. Um other than that, we generally um kept this elevation consistent with what we indicated the last time. Uh materials being semititious, um siding, semititious panels, metal roofs. Metal railings, metal canopies, um black window frames. Um again, black or colored front doors with blazing. Um so again, it's very consistent with what you saw um during the last uh last hearing. Um oh, did we wanna get to that, this or not, Daniel?
Yeah.
Okay, so um there was, uh I guess, a uh couple days ago. Um we got some indication, I think from the your board attorney. Um that there was some other um type of architecture that was more desirable for this particular um application. Uh we were um given a slide um from a uh. One of our uh sold out communities in actually Charlotte, North Carolina called Tremont Station. Um that's a uh a much different type of um urban infill townhome. Uh that have as urban street addresses, they're sixteen and eighteen foot wide townhomes, so again, they're they're with flat roofs and roof terraces. Um obviously, that's not what this application is is going for, we have pitched roofs with a loft that fits inside of it. And a terrace that fits inside of it off to the driveway areas. But um what we did here and we were thankfully, uh our architect was able to accommodate. Um we're getting this together for us, I think we were on three different calls. Uh Alex and I yesterday uh morning or before noon, um we were able to get something. Um taking some of the elements from that particular um development, the different colored brick. Um different color siding and the darker bays. And also eliminating the gables to give it a more modern look despite the fact that it would not have. Um a flat roof, it's just that's technically infeasible with the way this is laid out and also would have, we would have. Some dramatic um challenges with the height, uh which we're already struggling with, obviously, on one building. Uh we did, again, uh remove the grills, the grill patterns to give it a more modern sleek look. So uh what you see here is again a study that we were able to come up very quickly in the last forty eight hours. Um of something that, um you know, again, if this is something more pleasing, uh we certainly could. Uh pivot the architecture in this sort of direction. Again, we haven't looked at every single instance and how this would affect. Um you know, the building itself, but generally would would stay with the the footprint and layout, which we have proposed. So far with the site plan and we don't have much room to work with, as Mr. Chimalik has. Um alluded to before with all of the setbacks and the facts that were, fact that we're pinned on the um the setback lines. Based on the site configuration. Um we also did study the access road elevation. Um again, similar in nature to what we showed with the other, again, giving it a little more modern look. Same materials wrapping around, a little more playfulness with the door color for the main entry. Um and again, you would have a similar uh look to this um with the materials being. Um you know, a darker sort of um you know, color um on those bays. And the lighter brick that wraps around with the the lighter gray um brick, no grills. And again, we would keep the same fenestration ratios for both uh of these sort of, I guess, um. These conceptual proposals that we were able to together.
So i- i- if I i- if I can chime in as well. Um i- i- in my opinion, you know, Toll has really made a good faith effort. Um in trying to, like, I would call reskin these units. You know, we heard some feedback from the last meeting and since then, you know, as early as forty eight hours ago. We heard, hey, is this possible? Um and uh like I said, Toll's been very cooperative, they want this community to look nice. They want it obviously to happen um and you know, we heard about, hey, can we make this more? More contemporary, you know, remove the grills from the windows, change this color scheme, get it closer. To the kind of wind design, that that wasn't the original intent during the settlement. Um but as they've illustrated here and really come up. You know, last minute, because that's when we were notified about this. Um is this kind of alternative design. Uh you know, I do think it's worth noting that the original plans have been in for sixteen months. So they've been in for a very long time um and. You know, a- again, I think it's a sign of good faith from Toll to say, hey, yes, we're willing to last second on a split second. Change up the design to make them look more as what we think we heard from the last meeting. And again, in the last forty eight hours. My understanding from Toll is they're okay to go either way and we're happy to hear from the board. And my understanding is there's no material change to the buildings. What I mean by materials, the actual materials changed, but it hasn't gotten bigger, there's no. Overhangs that have extended further and it wouldn't trigger any other um variance condition. So th- this is essentially a reskin and if this is something the board prefers, Toll kindly enough is willing to do it. Um and.
We. We hear you.
Mm-hmm.
We hear you. Um, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I I don't wanna jump in front of Mia, cuz I know that she has serious concerns about that, but. Um if she wants me to go first, I'm happy to go first.
Um. In case what David is gonna say is very harsh, I just wanna say that um I I we really appreciate the effort. We note the short timeframe, um we, you know, goodwill is 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 good. Um and uh good faith efforts are good. Um and I uh think this is, you know, all right, it's is very encouraging the direction. Um that this has gone from where it was, so go ahead, David, and then I.
Thank you, Mia. Thanks, yeah, actually, I was gonna, I was gonna start with the good news. Um I I really quite like this um greenway elevation here. Um I, you know, I was looking at the way that the gables worked and they really landed in odd locations. They didn't work well with the windows below them and this this facade now eliminates that problem. In addition to being a little bit more contemporary, which I think uh I appreciate. I also um I don't remember what the overhangs were like at the doors, but I I like the little um. You know, little contemporary gesture, uh the overhangs. Let's go back to the other, you know, the overhangs over the entry doors here. Um so I thi- I think that this is a big improvement. Um the bad news, you know, is that I'm still not thrilled with the uh the end elevation, you can go go to that other slide. Um and what I'll say here is, you know, again, I like the more contemporary treatment. Um it is an improvement over what was there before. I still don't think it's really, it doesn't really look like a front facade. To me, um the the entry is there, but the amount of attention that's been given to it. And I think there are a few things that could be done to improve it even more. Uh for one thing, I noticed in the in the floor plans, in the bedroom, the master bedroom. The walk-in closet is still on this outside wall. I mean, from the standpoint of just even marketing these units, that is a crazy decision. If you can, and and there's plenty of room to put the walk-in closet on the party wall to the next unit. It's gonna help with allowing more light into the bedroom, it's gonna help with sound attenuation between the neighboring units. I just don't, it was something I suggested last time, I really don't understand why that closet is still located where it is. And if you move that, you could put a couple more windows into that bedroom and really. You know, spruce up this elevation even more. The other concern that I have is the kind of awkward relationship of the center gable. Projection with the entry door below it, where it's sort of the edge is landing. Uh on that doorway and I would love to see. I don't have a specific solution to suggest for that, but I think. Uh a little more attention to the way that the elements uh align with each other. You know, the side projection, the gable element also has a awkward relationship to the the door to the sprinkler room. So I think this still could use some more work, uh but it is an improvement.
Uh, thank you. I agree with all of that, um Ms. Sax?
Um, well, I I did wanna continue just a little bit more to, I had some questions about the front. But I I think that this obviously is is the priority and I'm wondering and if if the um applicant could address the what. Da- what David has um elaborated on. Um and I just wanted to add to that, I I mean, you know, like the the two windows and the 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 row of windows on, you know, from my screen, the the far left there. Um they just look so lonely and pathetic and, you know, isolated. And I'm just wondering if there's not something more that could be added to them. That would, um because even just having the. How the ornamentation around the other windows really makes a difference and then it 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 creates even more of a juxtaposition. Between those windows which have some, you know, some decoration and then these windows on the side, which just, you know. It it makes them look even worse and I I I see your point about it is a little bit uneven, the way that the door is there underneath. Uh so I'll just want to.
You're starting to sound like an architect, Mia.
I'm hanging out with you too much, David. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Green, uh are you the right person to r- respond to this? Uh with uh, you know, any, I'm particularly interested in whether. Um the simple. Uh change of uh moving the location of the walk-in closet is something that um. You are willing and able to. Put into effect.
Uh we can certainly.
In order to create room and and thereby create room for. Um a couple of more windows, more light, um uh better sound attenuation, all of the benefits. That um Mr. Cohen articulated.
Uh we can certainly look at it further, I I did do some early sketches and it did compromise the ability to furnish the room with. The walk-in closet doors being on what would have been the bed wall, flipping the bed wall to one of the exterior walls then would. You know, cause quite a bit of rearranging of some of the uh window elements to be able to get a bed um in that room. So there were some considerations beyond just where uh elements were physically to allow for additional windows, which is why we. Opened up the windows into the um on this, on the bedroom level in the walk-in closet. Reduce some of the hanging space, keeping it on the on the exterior wall as well as um in the um. The the living level opening up as a section of the kitchen where we would have a wall, a window uh on that walls. It is a struggle, um the uh placement of the entry door is limited by the location of the garage. Um so again, some of this, the spatial arrangement of having on the 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 bedroom level, or I'm sorry, the living level. Having your kitchen in the rear, your dining in the middle, which is where that gable element is in those two windows. And then having your great room in the front, which is a typical arrangement, you wanna have, you know, uh cooking to eating to living. Um again, to some challenges of where the windows can be placed um to get those rooms to work internally. So it's a, it really is a push and pull between um the ability to, I guess, come up with the most pleasing. Um elevation on the end as well as to have really livable spaces. Because um on, you know, not not to discount your concern here, but the people that are owning these these out, these homes. Are gonna wanna be able to live effectively and then they're not gonna particularly care about um what they may look like when they're they're heading heading out. Um you know, and there's street trees on, but in front of it as well, again, I don't wanna dismiss it, but. Um it's always a challenge, especially on the ends of buildings, uh to get these to work and we have a a lot of experience. Uh as I mentioned, several other other jobs that we're working on right now, Asbury Park, Seabright. Where the ends of the buildings just become a real challenge, we're with the circulation of the stairs. Uh living spaces and the other elements, you're trying to fit within a twenty three foot wide um townhome. Um is, you know, it is, I can't, I can't say it's not a challenge, there certainly are some other uh things we could try to consider that. Uh we've put hyper focused on the elevation.
When you say we're hyper focused on the elevation, the courtyard elevation, I take it you referred to.
Uh, that in the in the end, because we, again, you could, you can see that we we did, I felt like we did a lot on the end elevation to improve it.
Thank you.
And I I just wanna point out that the that the changes that. Um, Mister Cohen was suggesting, um, I was certainly would in- improve the. The elevation, but also um, would confer real benefits to the people living there. By by bringing more light into the room and by. Um, you know, helping to dampen s- sound from the next unit over, so. It's not all, i- it's about, it's it's practical as well as aesthetic, Mister Cohen.
I was just gonna say, I think that there are ways to manage the doors into the uh, walk-in closet. That the bed could still be located along uh, along the wall of the walk-in closet, so I. Hear your concern about furniture arrangement, I'm not saying that's wh- what I just said is the. Optimal solution, but I think that I think that deserves some real. Uh, additional consideration and then in terms of the the relationship. Of the center gable piece to the door below it, I think that, you know, the. The dimensions of the gable piece on the exterior do not have to match. The dimensions on the interior, you could have, you know, you could scoot the wall over to the right. To line up better with the door below or with the door recess, but that doesn't mean that you have to change the size of the. You know, the dining nook or whatever, whatever's determining, you would just have a sort of a blank. You know, a bo- a a box of poche there, to use a a word from architecture school. So I think that there, I think there are pretty easy ways to um. You know, and and that center gable piece does not need to be symmetrical on the gable, already the windows aren't. So, you know, why, why insist that the the bump out be symmetrical if the windows aren't symmetrically? I think doing something a little asymmetrical would work perfectly fine.
So um, I don't think anybody is, um, I see her hand up Mia, um, just a sec. I don't think anybody is suggesting that, although please correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Cohen or anybody else. Um, that we want you to go back to the drawing board again, come back another night, et cetera, et cetera. You know, hopefully we can get through this this evening, um. So I'd like to just put some thought into maybe Mister Cohen, Mister Mueller, whoever. You know, think about um, condition language that. That provides for additional consideration for these specific suggestions. Um, is that something that you?
Well, we've thought about it, again, I see Mia's got her hand up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
If she wants to address that, she can go first or I I can address that specific thing if she has something else she wanted to.
Why don't you go ahead, Mia?
I I just, I've not to that point yet, I wanted to go back to the front and finish and and so, I mean, what we had just described at the last meeting was. The integrated, um, you know, aesthetic. Around the shopping center, which was obviously driven by compliance with our third round settlement obligations. But which we worked very hard, Council's Affordable Housing Planning and Redevelopment Committee. We went back and did redevelopment so that we could create connectivity, circulation. Um, and rather than having isolated, um, you know, residential. Uh, you know, sort of Governor's Lane type gated communities, we wanted to have um. A sense of an entire neighborhood that was integrated, including aesthetically, and that was the issue with um. The, it was very dissonant, the the style that Toll originally presented here, um, if you look at what. Uh, Win and Avalon did, they, as I said at the previous meeting, sort of riffed off the mid-century modern. Um, design of the shopping center and managed to not make the shopping center. Um, not only didn't make it look worse, but I think made everything look better because they um. Um, really worked hard with 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 their architects, um, and this. Because it's on the other side of the connector road and it is facing, it is, you know. It is part of what is happening around the shopping center, it's not part of, you know, there's, there's, we've asked for the maximum buffer between. These townhouses and the the neighborhood, it's not, it really doesn't, isn't seen by, doesn't speak to, other than the affordable units in the front. Um, which has provided transition in the streetscape, but as you go down that road, you will see. You, the Alice, the shopping center, um, and and the Avalon uh. Development and so this, if this is not aesthetically integrated into that vision, it will stick out and it will diminish. The sense of place that is happening in this area, um, and we are, we have tried to do real place making here. So that's why this is so important, um, this is much better, um, and to your point, Daniel. Um, even though, and it and it's unfortunate, um, and a lesson learned, um, uh. For me to, when you are negotiating a settlement, to make sure that you have um, more specification on the aesthetics. However, um, and because this was not big R redevelopment. We couldn't continue to have that collaborative process, which was unfortunate, uh, but. The uh, design that we had looked at, which was from a local architect, uh, and which. Which unfortunately was not in the settlement agreement, but which we had anticipated was gonna be the basis for whatever was built here. Um, was a very contemporary rendering, um, and uh, this gets, it did have. Uh, I think there were flat roofs, um, and to your point about your community in Charlotte, which. Has more of a contemporary aesthetic, which is definitely what we're looking for here, um. I am wondering why the flat roofs worked in the original design, which I know that you're not bound by, but which we. You know, saw and anticipated would be the basis for design here, why the. You, if you could just explain again why you need this roof configuration, um, and also if you could. You would, or the architect could, um, and if we could go back to the the slide of the front, could maybe give us to to Louise's point about conditioning. Approval on some sort of. You know, additional work on getting the aesthetic to integrate. Uh, if maybe the architect could speak a bit more about ideas for. Cause I know you did this in very short notice, some ideas for maybe improving a bit more on on what you've done here.
Yeah, let me start by talking about the local architect that showed designs that were never plotted on. The problem is, she came up with designs that were not plotted on by an engineer. And as he would have done that, they would have to have been significantly modified because of the topographical restraints. So what she did is, like most architects, is start with conceptual ideas of here's a flat. Property and this is what I'm considering and because of the topographical restraints and. The setback restraints and the stormwater restraints, these started to change over time. Um, you know, we were supposed to be in front of the board a year ago almost and we were told a week, a couple of days before the meeting that. Oh, oh boy, we we made a mistake, there's an issue with stormwater and uh, we had to go back to the design board and modify the townhouse units. You know, um, we tried to come in with the least amount of variance as possible. Um, and specifically to height, you know, the the one corner of the townhouse row in the back still is not in compliance. I mean, it is in compliance when it comes to the proposed grade, but not to the existing grade and so there's. It it's very, very challenging to tie that all in together, so my anticipation is. Whatever the local tech, local architect design would have to be significantly modified to actually work on the site within the constraints of. The zoning that was in place and all the stormwater regulations. I can let Jeremy talk about the front facade and he can describe it further, I mean. Our understanding was, you know, hey. Uh, can you guys make some changes, you know, we don't wanna see the more traditional style windows, um, uh. You know, the roofs that were uh, reconfigured.
Much better, it's, it is much better and I and I understand what you're saying, I know the stormwater situation here was extremely challenging. And that, you know, both you and the Alice have, you know, that have um, are interconnected in terms of meeting your, the requirements. I I totally get all this and this is much, much better, I significantly, um, I think it it gives me confidence that. Um, you can get us where we need to go, I just wanted to hear a bit more from Jeremy, given that time was so short. Um, that, you know, there's, there's, there are some, maybe some general ideas of ways you could um. Do a bit more to get this closer to the more contemporary look um, that you have in some other areas, areas. Some of your other sites here and in other states.
Sure, um, uh, to be honest with you, I'm really not prepared to talk about, you know, how we would integrate flat roofs at this point. Um, with the short timeline and having received these at eleven forty-three this morning from our designer. Um, and going back and forth on a couple, actually several times, Alex and I and and Mister Peck, who's uh, our community planning senior vice president. Before he jumped on a plane for a long weekend, um, trying to get this to a place where we thought it was a compromise, you know. I think the big thing was eliminating those turned gables, as as you said, I think Mister Cohen said, they 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 didn't, they would not fit with a more contemporary look. Um, changing up the colors, um, and introducing, you know, uh, you know, some different elements and and the roof line that are a little more. Modern and contemporary, um, we use this element, several projects, we have a job in called Middletown Walk in Monmouth County that. Um, or three-story townhomes that we have elevations to integrate these, um. Again, I I I just, I'm not really prepared to to say what the floor plans would look like, what we would have to do as far as. Um, the roof structure, the loads that we would have to bring down, because obviously, when you have flat roofs, you have much lot higher loads, you know, having to. Deal with flat roof, uh, snow loads versus pitched roof snow loads, um, is significantly different, so.
I get it, I get it, so I mean, really, and it's very impressive that you were able to to even do this, uh, if it, since this morning, that's, you know. Very encouraging, so other than the roof, the the gable, the um, other than the flat roof, so do you feel like there's. If you had more time, there's more that you could do to, um, just with the facade that wouldn't be problematic. And in in terms of uh, interfering with what you have on the inside.
Yeah, I think one of the the elements that we um, had considered and and because of the short timeframe avoided because. Um, that physical development that you referred at the Tremont Station in in Charlotte, North Carolina had. Also had vertical board and baton siding, um, and also had some, a little bit of a different color. Um, variation had actually three different facades. Um, that were integrated together to create like four and six unit townhome buildings. Again, we just didn't have the time to be able to place, I didn't wanna place those in locations where it just seemed like an empty gesture. Because we were introducing another material, another color, but certainly I think perhaps looking at areas where we could integrate. Vertical board and baton siding um, into, you know, maybe the upper level so that you have a transition from. Um, you have a he- heavier base that's that's brick, you go to a, you know, a a element along that is horizontal lap siding. And the middle level and then there might be particular areas where we could, um, you know, integrate um, some vertical board and baton siding in like an article weight. You know, one of the places I'm kinda looking at is if you look at the second uh, townhouse unit from the left. The area above the red door, that's an area where we could probably do like a vertical board and baton. That would play up and that again, could would also happen again on the on the second one from the right, so yes, I believe there are. Gestures that we could, um, you know, look at, um, to make this even a little more, um. I I don't know whether it needs to be more contemporary, I think it might need a little more variation, to be honest with you.
Um, thank you, Miss, yep. Thank you both, uh, Mister Cohen.
Yeah, just to go back to your question, uh, earlier Louise about a way forward. Had a thought about that, but hadn't had a chance to run it by uh, Mister Mueller yet, so. Uh, would like to ask him now if he thinks it's appropriate, but sort of felt like since these aesthetic concerns. Were a significant part of the settlement negotiation, um, back when we were doing that. Um, whether it would be appropriate or possible to refer further. Sort of architectural design review back to the committee that was involved in the original settlement agreement. Cause it does feel a little bit out of the bounds, you know, of what we're usually allowed to weigh in on anyway. As a planning board, you know, we're not really supposed to be dictating design, but I think that. So resolve, it, you know, if it's amenable to the applicant and it's amenable to Mister Mueller, that's what I'd like to propose is. That um, that group. Um, be empowered to to meet with the applicant and come up with a solution that everyone's happy with. I I think you can have an outside group, but members of the board can't be on it.
Even council members?
Yes. Cause now we have, we have a pending application and um.
No, it would be, Jerry, it would be, we'd approve tonight, it would, it's, it's like I can do, it's a, would be, um. Yeah, it would be post approval.
Oh, okay, yeah, I think that's different, yeah.
Oh, okay, I did not.
I I I have, I I was prepared that the meeting would go in this direction, because this is really what it comes down to. And my concern is, at least I'm hearing from Mia is can we do flat roofs and if that's expectation. We've had a senior executive at Toll already tell us no, so he's on a plane, he's away, but he's told us no. And if, I I don't wanna put myself in a position where I have a subcommittee saying, well, we want flat roofs. And this is a subcommittee for you to get compliance and resolution and we can't accommodate that, so. It leaves up a lot of subjectivity on how this actually gets done.
I hear what you're saying, Daniel.
And again, it's. And again, it's. Yeah, a- and again, it's at the last hour, I mean, this application has been in for a year and a half. I have Win calling me, Eden's calling me, when is the road coming in, what's happening, I I said, I don't know, because I. I I honestly don't know.
But we have, we're the planning board here and we haven't actually seen it for the last year and a half, planning board members have not seen it. Maybe planning staff did, but we didn't, so, you know, and we saw it only a very short time before. The the time it came to the first hearing and, you know, we actually, you know, if we're gonna go back into who had what win. Let's, let's, let's revisit the reality that you sued the town in order to, you wanted originally. I think it was seventy units, so, you know, and we.
Yeah, let's, let's not revisit that, but. With respect to all, I mean.
It wasn't seventy units, and I'm providing six affordability for sale, and I'm providing twenty-four markets for sale.
Please.
Not, not what we're just doing.
Daniel, Daniel, enough.
Goodness.
My, my, I think, my, but how about if we just build on.
Uh, I I understand the frustration, I think Council President Sax has made clear that she's not going to die on the flat roof hill.
Right.
And um, and we're, and we've also made very clear those who are. Um, who have commented on it, that this is a big improvement, a great big step in the right direction. We're just asking uh, to work a little bit more toward. You know, what would be more ideal in terms of the uh, place making for this entire new neighborhood, which is no small thing.
But perhaps we could just build on the discussion that's already taken place, I mean, Jeremy has said that he agrees that there are areas that could be. Some color could be added and some other interest could be incorporated.
Variation.
On this facade and on the end piece, uh, uh, David has always has some very precise suggestions about the alignment. Of uh, the items, the movement of a closet to allow for another window, if we stay within the context of those. Uh, potentially minor but doable changes, uh, I I think we're fine. And the the the, the strong effort has been made to to meet the requests and this could be dressed further. It it was, as has been pointed out, we've had very little time to work on it, but. Uh, the, and to work with the the same settlement committee within that con. and to work with the same settlement committee within that context, just taking this and making it more attractive with design elements. I would recommend that Daniel let me agree to do that.
I I I'm not here alone. I have Toll Brothers with me.
Can I, can I ask, can I just chime in or ask just one, I guess, question or comment? For the committee that the architecture committee, I guess. Can there, can there be some sort of stipulation put that we won't be asked to change anything that would then require us to come back here as far as pushing something out beyond the building envelope or changing something that will ultimately have to lead back to the planning board? Can it just be based on material and color change as it currently stands? I mean, we'll do everything in our power to accommodate and make it look. Well, the word pleasing is opinionated, right? But pleasing to the architecture board, but we just don't want to be putting up a decision where it's, this looks crazy, makes us reshape what the building looks like, and then we're back playing working on.
You talked about color and so forth. If we added to that the possibility of an additional window or changes to the windows that you proposed, the very short list of very specific things on this building that does not create a variance condition or materially modify the site plan.
I I think we've gotten really ahead of ourselves here, you know, because we're assuming that we we we, no one should assume that we're approving tonight. And I also think we haven't talked about, like, I'm not sure why we're even talking about flat versus other types of roof styles, because I think the request for the, what is it, the quote unquote, fourth floor is a variance condition. I think we need some, some to hear more about that. And we we really haven't heard from the full board on how they feel about the attempt to improve the side, the end unit. And, you know, we really, I I would be very interested to hear from the rest of the board, whether they feel like the applicant has begun to meet what we requested collectively at the last meeting.
Fair point. So I I would like to hear from board members, and of course, we need to hear from the public as well. Mr. Tar, do you have any more testimony before get more questions from from the board?
No, by all means, let's take the questions. I just remind the board that we had extensive planning testimony on each of the variance conditions at the last hearing. So just, they they haven't changed in any regard.
Okay. Questions from, from board members, new questions, follow-up questions? Go ahead, Ms. Pearl Mutter.
I just want to clarify one thing. I assume that now flat roofs are out, but I want to make sure whatever they choose, if they choose to go that way, that we've talked about solar ready, and it's easier, I would assume, to put it on a sloped roof than a flat roof. I could be wrong about that, but I want to keep in mind that whatever changes are made, we would like to see that done, that a possibility.
Yeah. Noted. Thank you. Other, Mr. Muller?
Yeah, if I may, in terms of any post-approval submission to an outside group, I think we have to be very careful about that. Because we don't want it open-ended, where all of a sudden, whatever that group is, they're demanding changes that Toll is not going to agree to, and we're at an impasse. It seems to me the way to do this is to ask Toll, basically to do the, to consider the type of things we've just been talking about for the last extended period of time and have the interaction with the planning staff. I mean, that's the, that's the way I would do it. Otherwise, I think we're just going to get in a mess.
Well, in the planning staff, I would think would have the, maybe I'm just trying to wiggle around this, but could convene with the, with the applicant to discuss these specific things that we've gone over tonight. You know, not, not something completely open-ended. And invite the input or involve the group that Mr. Cohen, David, do you mind? Who who is on the?
I mean, it was, it was basically
The group that
It was the Affordable Housing Committee of Council, so.
Okay, all right.
So David is just asking for the group that negotiated this originally and has negotiated all of the settlements around the shopping center and spent a lot of time trying to do this type of place making to finish what we were not able to finish with this site. And that is, you know, the three members of Council's Affordable Housing Planning and Redevelopment Committee. But and, you know, I hear what you're saying, Jerry, but, you know, Daniel says this has been, you know, around for a year, and, you know, we weren't aware of it, and and it somehow landed in our laps in this condition, which was not what was originally envisioned in very extensive meetings for the settlement negotiation. And I, you know, I'm feeling very skeptical at this point about, it seems like there's a very strong and aggressive push from Toll Brothers to build this and build what they want to build. I don't, you know, I I'm feeling, the whole thing feels very uncomfortable.
But there also have been important steps forward, as everyone has has acknowledged. You know, this is much more pleasing and in keeping with what we're what we want at the end of the day than than what we saw earlier. So I just don't want to suggest that there's been no, that there's been no progress.
And I will say, you know, what Mr. Muller suggested was another option that I was thinking about before the meeting. I was a little bit concerned whether staff would want to be put in the position of aesthetic arbiters, which is why I didn't suggest it, Jerry, but we can ask staff how they feel about it. I mean. It's a good point. Yeah.
It is a good point.
Sure, I I could take that question. As you know, that's generally the way when there are changes somewhat similar to this that we do operate, we identify kind of the parameters of what staff is to look at. Really, it gives the flexibility for for both staff and the applicant to make these small changes after the fact, which is more often why we do it. And I think between our land use team and the applicant, we would be able to come to some sort of agreement during the compliance process that wouldn't necessarily hold up the application or or anything like that. The most recent example, slightly different, but would be with the Hun School, when we kind of deferred the pathways and how those might look when it was identified that it wasn't going to work at the meeting. And then we've been able to go out on site and discuss with them and come to a conclusion that works for everyone.
What kind of parameters would you envision putting around that, Justin? Because it seems like that's what the applicant is concerned about.
I think really the, the massing of the building or the footprint essentially would stay what it is. Architectural features in a limited scope, you know, not the change in the roof or anything like that, but different things that could be added or or changed without fundamentally changing the building. Materials, colors, nothing that would create a variance or or create a significant change to the structures.
And what about David's suggestions for the, for the sides? Because I think his suggestions do involve some of those changes that you had just said.
That's a good point. I think those would, would, you know, because they've been discussed, still be in play, and I think we'd be able to come to a a medium on those, again, without changing the footprint, let's say, maybe it changes the projections or where exactly the windows are, but not, you know, we're not talking about lopping off half a floor or anything like that.
Mr. Green, I saw your hand go up and then it went back down again.
Sure, I did.
Are you ambivalent about what I'm going to say?
It's backup. I just did want to make a point that somebody brought up earlier, and I'm not sure who it was. I apologize that any suggestions that would not cause any additional waivers or variances is very important.
Yeah.
Yes, understood.
And Justin just mentioned that, right.
Other questions from, from board members? And seeing none, I will open the meeting now to public comment. There are fourteen, oh, excuse me, Mr. Alaska.
Madam Chair, Mr. Chitallo had his hand up. I'm not sure if he wanted to respond.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think, obviously, it's difficult to put what we're attempting to do in writing. But we are, we're open to work with the board to come to a resolution as long as we're all in the same mindset that we don't want to, like, change the 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 building envelope and the massing, but again, material changes, color things, adding some windows, as long as it makes sense. We're, we would, I think we've shown so far that we're willing to work with the board to the best of our ability to, to accommodate those.
Thank you for that. Thank you. That's helpful.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Muller?
Yeah, somebody had said early on, I think it was Mr. Barsky, that somebody would be discussing the question that David had raised at the last meeting about the sequence of construction of the access road so that it wasn't used after it was paved for construction purposes and then had to be repaved. And maybe who who would comment on that?
I can, I can comment on that. Do we have the slide that shows the access road? So basically, what would, what would occur? What what we've done this throughout the state was that area in pink would just be paved as like a regular roadway to begin with. And then so regular traffic can go over it. And then once we're done with the heavy machinery and trucking throughout the site, it would all be ripped up and then redone with a pervious pavement. That's how, that's a handle, that's how we handle it around the state. We do pervious pavement in a lot of our communities because of stormwater. And that's how, that's how we handle it, because we understand the concern. If we put it down too early, the trucks and the dirt will just mess it up and clog it up. So we put down regular pavement about three inches thick, and we just remove it when we're all done, when the, when the time calls for it.
And Alex, just if you could confirm that the reason that the pink section would be done first is because that the driveway and so forth that you see to the right of the roadway is Wynn's parking area. And they think they'll finish first, and we'll need to be able to get out that exit. So it would be paved to allow for that to happen, but then made into pervious pavement later when we were finished.
Correct.
So so there is a, a larger question, well, an additional question about that, which is how soon could the, the pinkish area be done? You know, because I know that the schedule for when is, I think they're hoping to be complete in late August or September. So I don't know, I don't know how that works with the schedule for the applicant.
This approval has a lot to do with that, Mr. Cohen.
Sorry to laugh, but I was pretty sure you were going to say that.
If we give the approval tonight, that you'll do it. You'll have the temporary road in, in that.
Alexa, put you on the spot, buddy.
I will say when we'd, obviously, we have to close on the property in order for Toll to do anything here, but we're looking at about from two months, once we can get access. Once we close on the property, we can get that area, we can get that area paved.
And realistically, an estimate, when you think you'll close?
Right now, our schedule is projecting us to close. Again, Daniel, you're handling the approvals on this one, so I don't want to speak for you. I'll let you chime in on that.
Right. It's geared to compliance. If we complete compliance, then you're going to buy, and two months later, you'd say you have the road, that's a little stretch.
Well, I I I probably need four months from the time of approvals for outside agency approvals, so six months total to get that part of the road in. But, I mean, when can say August, but there's just no way. I mean, there's no way they're ready for August. They're a year away from moving ready. So, you know, they're trying to squeeze and press, and they want it done. And, and by the way, so do we, but, you know, as of right now, it looks like our timelines would coordinate, meaning I I can get outside agency approvals in the next four months, and Toll Brothers closes, and two months later has a road in in six months. And it looks like to me, when has six plus months to finish, if not more.
Is there anyone from, I'm just wondering, Louise, if there's anyone from the when company in the audience who would like to speak? Because I I don't think it's that, it's very, this is the sequencing is really critical. And, you know, we do have, you know, this is part of our court mandate, so it's, we, we, you know, do need.
Ben is here. Oh, Steve is here, yeah.
Before we get to that, I believe that part of the road, and perhaps maybe the whole road, was actually approved as part of the win project. So I don't think you would need to wait for the outside agency approvals to get started on those.
Yeah, but
And they, they can't get their C O A, C O A until their people can, till that paving is done, so that their people can drive through.
But I I would, I would say Toll's not going to spend money and time building a part of a road that they haven't closed on the property yet. So that's the, that that's the constraint there. I'm happy to hear from when. If if they say they're going to be done in August, we can take bets on it. I mean, they're not going to be done in August or September or October, but I understand they want that that part of the road in. And, and realistically, four months for outside agencies, two months for Toll Brothers to get that part of the road in six months. And and that part of the road will be in, and likely that's when when we'll need access to the road.
Okay, thanks. That's all helpful to know. We have two folks with hands up so far. It might be that one of them is with when. I'll again announce it, opening up the meeting for public comment. So if you'd like to, to address the board, and you'll have three minutes or less to do so, up to three minutes. Now's the time to raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon. We have two folks. One whose hand just went down. So right now, one person, S. Gilbert?
Louise, could, I'm sorry.
You're moving over both of them?
I moved, I moved Kirk over already.
Okay, okay, great.
Louise, I'm sorry. I just have a question, because this issue of the road is very important and the timing of the road. And I'm just wondering, and maybe it's a question for Jerry in terms of public comment, but I, and these two members of the public are from the win company, so they are going to speak to Daniel. And I'm just wondering if we can then bring it back to the board to talk about, to continue the discussion of the road before we then open it up to public comment in general, because I'm afraid we will then not finish the discussion, we'll get distracted from the road.
Yeah, I think that's a good thought.
I do, too. Thank you. Yep. Mr. Gas, Gastinger? Can you activate your camera and unmute yourself?
If you could raise your right hand, you weren't sworn in the last time, were you?
No, we didn't take any public comments.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Kirk Gastinger, G A S T I N G E R.
Thank you.
Well, I'll be brief. As a member of the public, I support many of the comments that Mr. Cohen and others have made regarding the design of the facility. I think it needs to be moved from what I would call a D to at least a B. But my comment or question as a new resident to Princeton is I know that the density has been reduced over the design of this plan. I know that the density has been reduced over the design of this, uh, plan for some long period of time, from what I understand. But as a nearby resident, uh, I, I don't understand why, uh, one, the architecture has to look so different from what is now being constructed. And then two is, uh, about the density and, uh, I don't understand how the, the design of the facility is so tight that, uh, even though we support the idea of reducing the number of cars in the properties is that there is no flexibility for, uh, visitor parking or service parking or any kind of emergency parking. Uh, it seems that it's, uh, more intense than the site can actually handle. That's, uh, my question, uh, my comment mostly, um. That's it. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mr. Gaskindor. Um, sorry, I just mangled your name. Uh, ma- maybe some uh, our, um, staff can speak to um, uh, density, which was, um, negotiated, um, by, by council and so, um, uh, you know, the, the number of units on the site is set. Um, and we did have testimony at the last meeting about um, access, uh, to parking for service people and visitors and emergency um, responders. So I don't know whether we want to revisit that, but it has been it has been, um, covered.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Mr. Cohen, were you about to?
Well, I was just going to say there is visitor parking, uh, is parallel parking on the street, on the connector road. So there are about ten spaces, I think.
Hmm. Yep, uh, Madam Chair, I was going to say the same. I believe it's eleven spaces. Um, but there are also bike lanes coming in as part of the Wynn development. Uh, there's the connection through this connector road to the Muni and NJ Transit bus stops at the shopping center. Um, so all of the, the townhouse units do have garage space for two cars. Most will probably, you know, use at least one, some will use two, there's no doubt about that. Um, but there's, it's certainly not bare minimum. Um, it's enough and then some extra to take that overflow and to, you know, allow for people to have a less car dependent lifestyle.
Thank you. Um, and in terms of the architecture, I, I don't mean to presume to answer your question fully, but that's a big part of what we're talking about here tonight and, and trying to make certain that it is, um, consistent with um, with the rest of this, uh, new neighborhood. So certainly of, of concern um, to this board. Um, we have, um,
And there was another person who had their hand up, but I think they lowered their hand for now.
Mr. Gilbert. Are they here?
Mr. Gilbert is, is, is over and he is, I think, ready to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Gilbert, if you, I saw you had activated your camera, although I can't find you on my screen at this moment. Oh, there you are. Um, if you, okay, and you unmuted yourself too. Okay, so Mr. Muller needs to swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand.
It's raised, Mr. Muller.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give or be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Stephen Gilbert, G I L B E R T, Vice President, Wynn Development.
Is that S? Is that S T E V E N?
P H E N.
Yeah, Jane, okay. Thank you.
Um, I'm, I'm responding, uh, to Daniel's comment that we won't be open till next year. That's not the case. Um, we're already leasing apartments for October. So, um, you know, we really need this road in by September. I don't, you know, it's that simple.
Okay, that is very good to know. Anything, any other comments you care to share?
Uh, no, you know, we're looking forward to Toll Brothers being our neighbor. Um, this is going to be a wonderful uh, neighborhood when it's done. Uh, and I, you know, kudos to, uh, the uh, the council team that has worked for tirelessly for years to put this together. Um, it's, uh, you know, their vision is, is, uh, you know, is, is going to result in a, in a real new pole for Princeton, you know, this, there's a new town center for Princeton. And, uh, and I look forward to being part of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so with Mr. Gilbert's testimony about the road, is there anything that we need to revisit, um, as a board or discuss before we hear from other members of the public?
The details of, of how, I, I think we now have a problem, which is that, I, I mean, Jerry can speak to how we win, uh, Wynn has said that they, they are planning to be done by the fall, which is consistent with what we have represented to the school district and to others in the community. Um, and they cannot get their certificate of occupancy if they do not have the ability for their new residents to drive into the entrance. Um, and so the question becomes the sequencing of of, you know, how, how does it work in terms of what can Toll have that road ready by the fall? And I, I guess that, that involves a series of permits, which we don't know the timing of which, I, I, I mean.
Right, which Mr. Barsky said would, he estimates would take four months, um. And, um, I have no reason to doubt his, his estimate based on his experience and, and we can expect that Toll would not you know, close until after those, after Mr. Barsky has those um, those approvals and six months from today is, uh, September 4th, unless I have that wrong. Or is that October 4th?
It's October. I think it's October 4th.
Oh, yes, it is. It's October 4th, right. Yep, so very tight.
I mean, Wynn, Wynn told us that they didn't need that part of the road when we were negotiating. So this is news to me that now they needed to get a certificate of approval, but I, I, I would say that we're going to do our very best. Obviously, it's in everyone's mutual interest for me to get the outside agi- agency approval and close and for Toll, who obviously is nationwide company to get this job done quickly, which I'm sure they will. And I know they've already had some communication with Wynn. I've had some uh, contact with Edens and so you know, it's kind of been on hold because I said, hey, guys, we're going through the planning board approval process and um, you know, let's get over that hump. Once we get over that, then I'll have a better idea of timeline, but obviously, we're going to work with Wynn. Wynn is, um, uh, assisting us with some issues we have with stormwater and, uh, to, to get our stormwater out of our property. So we have a mutual interest to make it work and we're going to do everything in our power to meet the timeline so that Wynn can move forward. Um, you know, there, there's not any contention.
I'm just wondering if we could hear, uh, first of all, I want to say that, Mr. Barsky, you've represented things that Wynn said to you uh, a number of times and we don't have someone, we just had Mr. Gilbert, but we don't have a counterpart from Wynn. And so I think the board should understand that that's essentially a form of hearsay. You are representing what Wynn has said to you in conversations. We are not hearing from Wynn. What you are saying is not consistent with my awareness of, um, the dialogue between the two parties. So I just think the board should know that, you know, that is what you are saying. It's your, your one-sided representation of what has taken place in a closed conversation between two parties and, um, so.
I do think Daniel's under oath, though, so we.
To put a, to put a point on it, he doesn't get paid, he doesn't get paid until the, the, the compliance is completed. There's a lot of incentive to get the compliance completed. Uh, you know, there, there's just no disagreement of fact there, except when they think they're going to be done and who knows?
Right.
Yep.
I mean, it's, one, one of the obvious alternatives would be for Wynn to go ahead and put in the temporary road that we were just talking about. Um, but I think that their position might be that, you know, it's Toll's responsibility to do that because Toll just represented that they need to do that for their construction access anyway. So then the question is, can there be arrangement to compensate Wynn for doing the road? I'm not sure this is really the board's purview to be negotiating the financial arrangements between these two parties, but there, there are, there are other options besides just hoping that the schedule works out um, to have Toll do, do the whole construction. So, you know, again, something that I taught, I did get a chance to talk with Jerry about before the meeting because I had concerns about this was the possibility that there could be a condition that part of the compliance is to have an agreement between Toll and Wynn as to exactly how things are going to proceed. Um, you know, and, and what the financial responsibilities are. And I think that should be able to be uh, negotiated because as everyone keeps pointing out, they have aligned interests. So it should just be a matter of sitting down and talking through and coming to some agreement on, you know, what's, what's going to work best. Both sequencing and financially.
Yep.
Could, could we hear from Mr. Weissman, uh, on just his, uh, sense of the sequencing of the road based on what we've just heard from Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Barsky?
Dan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Absolutely, Council President. Uh, having a temporary entrance and holding off for the construction of the stormwater management, uh, pervious pavement and under drains. Sounds like a, a mutually agreeable, uh, alternative. Um, the concern of, of having construction access going over a pervious pavement driveway with under drains would causing if, would likely cause, uh, some, some rework and damage that would have to be done at the end of the job. Um, having that temporary roadway in place, uh, I think alleviates a lot of that concern. Um, the one thing that would affect the Wynn property because the design of that roadway was, uh, considered part of that application regardless of who's constructing it. Their final CO would be contingent on having that roadway completely constructed per the plan. Um, so a temporary CO could be issued for the building with that secondary entrance constructed. Um, but that temp, that, that temporary would have to be extended until the entirety of the Barsky slash Toll property is constructed.
And do you see any issue in terms of this tight timeframe that we've just been discussing? So let's say everything goes as planned. Is, is it possible that whoever, whoever builds the road and whoever pays for it, that, that, um, that the road could be built in time for October occupancy on the Alice?
It's hard to say. It's an extremely tight timeline. Um, the construction of a temporary driveway uh, is significantly less than the construction of a full roadway. Um, so it, I think there should be some consideration of, of having this constructed on Wynn's property, which is already approved, which is a temporary measure. Um, without having the, the full final approval, I think that's something that could be considered. Um, I don't know why it would have to hold up the entirety of, of Wynn's development to have this built. Um, obviously, the, the cost share is, is a big question. But I think we're just talking about curbs, uh, and some base course pavement in the time being, um, for a, a small section of roadway.
And then once it's ripped, but then when that's ripped up, how would the residents, I mean, how would they get in and out of the Alice while during that period in which it's being ripped up and repaved?
It would have to be staged. Uh, you put up temporary traffic control where maybe you have one lane open for ingress or egress. Um, and then the continuity of the driveway out to, to North Harrison, um, would continue.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Question and thanks for the answer.
Anything else we should think of, Dan? That we haven't.
What question have we not asked, Dan, that you think?
Exactly. Exactly.
But have.
I think that's it. I think, uh, and nothing else comes to mind at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, it's coming up on nine thirty and, um, I, I don't think, I, I think there's a ways to go here and so I would like to, um, take a break. Um, and reconvene at, um, nine thirty-five. That's nine minutes from now. Um, hope that's okay with everybody. We'll, we'll re, we'll reconvene and start promptly at nine thirty-five. Thanks. Almost back. Activate our cameras and reconvene. I'm sure, there we go. There's Mia. Um, so I think we can, uh, do we need, uh, there, does there need to be any more discussion, uh, of, of the road before we hear from other members of the public who may wish to speak right now? There are no hands up. Um, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I do just want to mention, you know, that in addition to what we've talked about as com- possible complications around the road. The last complication, and this isn't the applicant's fault, you know, or Wynn's fault. Uh, but it's, is the dog leg, is the purple part of the road that connects to the shopping center. And I think that also needs to get hashed out. Um, you know, I think with the municipality at least in the room. Um, also, um, ideally with the shopping center owners in the room. So I, I just put that out there because because I do think that a follow-up conversation needs to happen to come up with a plan for the entire road that, uh, meets everybody's needs. And so I had briefly suggested before we broke that you know, having a condition, um, of approval that requires that, uh, an agreement to be reached between the parties. You know, would be, um, important.
Prudent.
For, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, agreed. So there are eleven, um, members of the public attending. Um, if any of you would like to address the board at this time, now is the, and haven't already done so, now is the time to uh, click on the raise hand icon. You could be brought over and sworn in and speak. I'm not seeing any hands go up, uh, going once, going twice. Okay, I'll close the public, um, comment portion of the meeting and let's talk about our path forward. There are a few conditions that have been uh, talked about. I guess before we go over those, are there any other, um, comments or thoughts that board members want to discuss or articulate?
Louise, just a.
Cohen, yep.
Yeah, um, at the outset. Yeah, um at the outset, Justin had gone over what he saw as the outstanding issues. Justin, do you want to direct the board to any discussion on any of them?
Let me pull up my list uh real quick. I think since last time. Uh the redesign of the architecture we've discussed is having a condition. Of staff working with the applicant uh to make changes within those parameters we discussed earlier. Uh fence materials, um that's up to the board to decide. Uh the applicant mentioned the solid cedar six-foot uh fence. Um, we talked about the status of the Magnolia trees with the three replacements in the front yard. In. In place of the two that uh Mr. Uh Dobremilsky spoke about before, the reasons why. It'd be nearly impossible or impossible to uh change those. Keep those, excuse me. Um the HOA operations and, and documents we discussed earlier. Um I don't think the board needs any more information on that, but correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we will need those uh after the fact. Uh the parking spaces and how they'll be assigned to the affordable units. I think it seemed like everyone was kind of in agreement that that makes sense. And then the road obviously is the only other discussion.
Well, actually, the reason I raised my hand was to talk about the fourth floor and the variance. For that, which um I just want to support. Um, I think that having that living space on the fourth floor. Uh really doesn't have any negative implications. And. You know, I do, I think we heard this testimony before. It was contemplated at the time of the settlement agreement. Uh because we had a definition of um usable space that was more generous. At that time, and the, the design does conform to that. So it's only a variance. Because of the zoning change that would happen between when the. Uh settlement was negotiated and now. So I, I'm in support of that. I don't think it has a, a negative. Any, any serious negatives, and I think there's strong reason to support it.
Good. Thank you for that. Um Freddie Pearl Mutter?
Yeah, uh, okay, uh, I just wanted to say uh. Uh ask if we can add, add a condition, the solar. Uh ma- matters that we talked about in terms of what they have to put in for construction now to make sure that everything is at least solar ready. If they don't put solar in right now. I leave it to David to say specifically what it is, because that's.
But I, I think it would be real, it's a really good point, and I think it would be helpful. I, I know we can't do this tonight on the fly. But um for the municipality to. Um for the benefit of. Um applicants and homeowners identify what solar ready means for a multi-unit. Dwelling. I mean, I, I'm in a duplex. I have solar on my roof and my neighbor doesn't. I save a ton on electricity and my neighbor doesn't. And uh, and we have a, a, a two-unit homeowner association. I'm, I'm not saying all of that to make this about me at all. I'm just saying that. Uh I, I guess, you know, as long as all. Uh as long as a homeowner association is okay with. One or more of its number putting panels on the roof than that. Homeowner or that family should be able to benefit. You know. You know, with the much lower electric bills. Anyway. Um a- and, and if we don't have a clear. We don't have clear direction for um. Applicants and developers about what it is that we mean by solar ready, then it's. You know, maybe a moving target and that's not fair.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I am. I, I just wanted to suggest, you know, because there's a little bit of gray area there. This may be one of those instances where we. Um ask, you know, have a condition that they. Make every effort, you know, to, to make it solar ready. So just in case we, you know, find out that there is something prohibitive. But I, you know, I, I heard everything Daniel said about it being difficult. To herd the cats and get everybody to agree in the homeowners association, but. We also just have to be super cognizant that. Conditions today are not. So the same as conditions in five years or ten years. And there's going to be a lot, I think, a lot more incentive to have the solar panels. I think. Circumstances are going to change in such a way that. They will be, there, there will be an interest in it at some point. And it, and, you know, it's a lot harder to make it solar ready after. The thing is built and people are occupying the space. So if it's not prohibitive. And it sounded like, you know, toll would be amenable to doing it as long as it wasn't prohibitive. So. I, I think that that's the solution for that, for, you know, is to, to make every effort to make it solar ready, but. Not, not an absolute mandatory.
Yeah.
Well, what, what about the idea that they're, they're going to run conduit from the, the roof to the place in the building? Hey. I, I, I think that that's. Part of it, but. The part that I don't know the answer on for sure is then how does? The power that's coming down from the roof get distributed to the six units? In the, you know, and maybe the, I think, maybe the right thing to do is to run six conduits.
Yeah, that's.
Six separate solar installations, one for each townhouse. I don't, I don't know what the right answer is, but I, and, and for that reason, I don't feel. Uh I don't feel comfortable imposing a specific requirement.
Yeah, we have no problem talking to our um solar consultant just to understand what that is and. Do our best to make sure that in the future, if the homeowner association decides to have it. That we're doing the right thing now um to provide them with it. Again, I think you hit it on the nose. We don't know what those restrictions are, but we're definitely willing to consult with them, find out what it is. And um and figure out a way to uh to at least make it ready, to make it easier for an install at a later date.
Thank you for that, Mr. Chotolo. Council President Sacks?
Yeah, I'm, if someone could refresh my memory, maybe the applicant um on what the other sustainability measures are. That the uh applicant is deploying in this development. Um I'll just say that the. Other uh sites in this neighborhood um have gone to great lengths. The both uh the Alice and Princeton Senior Living, um the heating and cooling systems are fully electrified. Um uh the Alice is um, I think reaches a passive house envelope certification. Uh will when it's constructed. Um and all of the, the, both the Avalon sites and Princeton Senior Living and the Alice. All have a combination or all of uh zero energy homes ready and or lead certified. Um and um, you know, the, the Avalon Shopping Center was not able to do. Heating and cooling, electrification of heating and cooling, because it requires a generator on site and there wasn't enough space. But, you know, um all of these sites have gone above and beyond state statute. And of course, that was possible because they were. Uh the town was able to impose that because it was within a redevelopment framework, but it certainly gave us a sense of what, what is. Possible. Um and it, there certainly would be a, a wide discrepancy if um. This site were not at least uh attempting to do some of what all of the other sites have, have really um. Are, are doing pretty amazing things and, and maybe we touched on this uh in the first meeting, but I, I don't remember hearing in depth. Then would be interesting to hear. I, I would like to know what, what they're planning in this arena.
Thank you for that question. Mr. Green, you've got your hand up. You want to respond?
Yeah, absolutely. Um lower my hand so it's not going up and down. Um, yeah, I believe the last time um we talked about six weeks ago, I had gone in, I sort of gone into great length about. What Toll Brothers does now for uh energy compliance. Uh that is a well above and beyond the new state regulations. That were implemented uh into, into law under the uh. Uh Residential Energy Act as well as the Ashray ninety uh for multifamily and commercial buildings. Um follow the New Jersey Clean, Clean Energy Program now for our, which is our uh compliance certification path. For um meeting the energy code. It's above and beyond. I think I testified that. Most of our homes uh will be fifteen to twenty percent above the baseline, uh two thousand and one uh international. Energy Conference Conservation Code, which is quite significant. Uh while we are not going the route currently of a, all electric. Um we are going to um things like um on-demand gas-fired um single-source. Hot water heaters so that there's no, uh and these are all Energy Star certified. Uh the glazing, our envelope, all meet the Energy Star compliance. Uh and that sort of thing. Um one other thing I didn't touch upon was. Um the way that we construct buildings, we actually have a plant in Morrisville. Where we uh fabricate all of our panels and our trusses in roof trusses and ore systems. Uh they are shipped uh very locally. I believe it's less than thirty miles to a, a site like this. Basically zero waste. Uh panels come out all prefabricated, pre-drawn. It's basically an IKEA kit of parts. Uh typically, we have about five percent waste on site. Most uh construction sites are anywhere, you know, anywhere to ten to fifteen percent waste. So yes, we have gone to great lengths. Um to that um full LED, um you know, lighting systems, uh all cut off in timer systems. Uh so yeah, that's part of our vernacular currently and uh. You know, it's something like I said, we implemented about a year ago, so we're still learning. Uh but we're finding that that's a, a great selling point and it is contributing to, you know, the energy conservation effort. Um, you know, throughout the state.
Thank you.
If I will add one more thing, it also is going to benefit the homeowners long-term to have and be living in energy-efficient homes.
Yes. Um other questions, other thoughts? From board members or from staff? I am not. Seeing any, so um. And we're finished with. Public comment. Do we, do we want to talk about um a motion and conditions? Mr. Tar, you're on mute.
Sorry, could I just take a moment to remind you that we had those three variances that were mentioned. Uh tonight, the solids, the voids, the sign location and the building height. There were also two. Uh essentially waivers of the RSIS requirements um on page four of the memo from February um twelve. One is the water line that the American Water Company wants to put in is not a looped water line. And the other is that there are significantly more um parking spaces uh on the site than required by local ordinance. But if it's just a few fewer than are required by the RSIS. So those are waivers. If we could add those to the package of things to be considered.
And just to clarify, um there are actually two height variances, one for the number of floors. And one for the height and feet for that last building.
Correct. It's, it was two point four feet taller if you went from the existing grade. Instead of the finished grade.
Yeah.
Ms. Sacks?
Yeah, I, so, I mean, I don't think we're ready to make a motion because we haven't fully articulated. What the condition related to the road was and, and just to reiterate what Mr. Cohen had said. Um he's proposing that there be an agreement between uh wind development. Barsky, Toll, um and Edens on the sequencing of the road. Um I think the, we can't uh speak to, I, I, I mean, would we? David, were you proposing that we request that they reach an agreement on the cost sharing?
Se- sequencing, sequencing and cost sharing. I mean, essentially. Because. I mean, I feel like there was fair agreement tonight on the fact that there should be a temporary road for the first. Portion to access winds side, so. So maybe sequencing isn't that big of a deal, but. When we.
I think it's a big deal. I, I think it's the big deal.
Ri- right, and who's responsible for? For each of those pieces and cost sharing, right? If, if Toll builds the whole thing, it's one thing. If we build part of it, needs to be compensated, it's another. So, yeah, I think sequencing and cost sharing. Are the major issues.
So I guess we need to ask Ms. I guess we just need to ask Mr. Tar if, if he is, if the applicant is, is um willing to um. Participate, to have that, you know, how they. If they're willing to participate in that process, that can.
Sure. I mean, I, I'm slightly concerned that we're in a hurry to get the road built and we're going to have a four-party negotiation. That doesn't sound consistent. The settlement agreement is very clear about the rectangular area that's. Barsky's responsibility that Toll is going to take over. So, but, you know.
And, and I, 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 I have to actually agree. I think David adding. I, I would like for Edens to, to be part of this discussion. But to be fair, adding the dog leg, which is, you know, has been a very um vexing and challenging additional part of this. And the dog leg, for people who don't know, that is the little curve at the bottom that is, that goes into the shopping center. It is not the dog park. It is.
Hopefully not. Right, but, but. I mean. It is so critical as a part of the conversation because if that's not sequence, if that's not part of the same construction. It's not Toll's responsibility. But if it's not part of the. Whole construction, then we have questions about construction access for the dog leg. That can destroy the, the, the other part of the roadway.
It would make all the sense in the world whether when you finish the, get rid of the, the temporary driveway into win, it should all be done. And Barsky Toll is hard to pay for the rectangular piece that comes up against the dog leg.
Yeah, so it has to be part of the conversation, whether, whether we bring Edens in or we don't. And we just figure it out and then we take the risk. The town takes the risk that we can get Edens to agree to whatever we, 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 we figure out. I mean, but it has to be part of the conversation.
Understand. So Daniel's pointed out that the compliance period is four months. During that period of time, it, it's very logical for all those four parties to get together with your help to come to terms.
Great.
So what's the right way to? And I don't mean to get ahead of ourselves, but it seems like we're at the point where we need to decide how a condition reads. Um or the, at least the basics of it um that provides for exactly that.
So it would be uh an agreement between all four parties on the sequencing of the construction of the road. And the cost sharing.
Okay, but and, and that involves a meeting and it involves um a timeframe?
It's part of the compliance process. So it's the sort of four months that Chris was just talking about.
Okay.
But hopefully much sooner than that.
Yeah.
That's, that's sort of the.
Jerry, how would we?
As soon as practicable.
How would we uh uh articulate that, Jerry? You're on mute.
Yep, um I would just start there. Uh one of the conditions is there being an agreement between Toll, Win. Uh Edens and, and Princeton as to road sequencing and, and cost sharing. And the, including the dog leg to the um shopping center. And I would leave it at that.
Okay.
Uh but the cost sharing on the dog leg.
for myself or Toll?
No, 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 you are
So, I just, I just want to make sure that that's clear so that there's not confusion later.
Super clear, Daniel, super clear.
It's, it's, it's very clear in the settlement. You are not
Right, all consistent with the settlement.
Yeah.
Very good, very good.
Good. And the conditions surrounding further discussions about architectural features was that the applicant will work with the planning office to refine or address specific questions raised tonight, including variation of color and materials, window type and location, and we want to say something about
Consistency with the, the work to bring the development into aesthetic consistency.
I think that, I think that goes a little too far. We're, 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 we're going to agree to specifics about the windows, the color, the alignment of the door with the space above it and things of that sort.
Architectural features generally.
But that's just the side, Chris. I mean, we're
No, no, and the, and the front, the front as well, the long side as well as the short side.
I mean, I think what, I mean, maybe Mr. Green can put some language around this, but what he described, I, I found very promising.
Batten boards.
The materials, that involves materials, you know, but I think, you know, the point is, it's not something that would in any way create a new variance condition or, you know, so
Or require another trip back here.
Right, right, right.
To the
Jerry, we could, we could pick up, you go back in to listen to the tape and pick up those architectural terms he used about the types of boards he might incorporate or different colors that might be used.
Materials.
Materials.
Yeah, he's referred specifically to board and batten and to brick, I think. And, and one word I caught was variation, because as you look, you know, at one one dwelling next to another, it's so much more pleasing when you can tell where one one house stops and another one starts. I mean, without making it busy, obviously. I'm not an architect, but. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Green? Or have we?
No, I think you've done a good job paraphrasing the variation in materials. Looking at reworking the floor plan so that we can introduce additional windows on the end elevation to increase our fenestration ratios and make the windows make a little more sense. And that sort of thing. Yeah, I, I hear, and I believe Alex and I have been texting, we're loud and clear on what the, the board's intent is for us to move forward.
Thank you for that.
And, and Madam Chair, that conversation will be based on the architectural drawing we saw tonight. I'm not sure what the exhibit number was, but I know it was dated April third, correct?
For, for the courtyard elevation, Justin?
Yes, the courtyard and the end.
Yeah, that's the, the courtyard is twenty, the, the end is nineteen.
It, it's slide, it's slide nineteen and twenty.
Yeah, of exhibit, of exhibit two.
So, just to be clear though, for the, for the board, we're going with the green. We're not going with what we talked about last time. Just start, okay?
That's correct.
Mr. Weissman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question with the, these changes. So, the variance for the fenestration is based off of a ratio. The ratio is essentially set in the fenestration of the courtyard. So, if there's a potential to add windows, I would just request that the variance be granted on meeting a, a minimum number for the access road facade. Currently, it's at fourteen point eight. So, I think it would just be important to have that reflected in the condition that these architectural changes should not decrease that fenestration lower than fourteen point eight percent.
The goal is to increase.
Yeah, and I like where, where Dan Weissman's head is, is like very specific goals, and that's what I was trying to speak to earlier, is that so it's not very broad and subjective where we're back in front of the board in two months because there's some misunderstanding. If there's a way to frame it so that, I mean, we understand one another, what everybody wants, but so that it's specific enough so that it meets the standards in the resolution compliance, so that we can move forward, get the project complete, get the road built, all the rest. So, I mean, I think that's a good point from Dan, and if there's anything else to add, which I personally can't think about at the moment, which can very specifically identify, hey, this is what our goals are. And i- it's material change, color change, it's fenestration, what it is, plus better, you know. I, I think that would be helpful and make me feel more comfortable with the process. I, I have full faith in the board and in staff, but it helps everybody when there's, you know, part of the problem is is clarity is, you know, when I originally, when we originally settled the settlement agreement, the committee had one thing in mind, I had another thing in mind, and there was, you know, for example, the fenestration matching was not possible. And the town had in mind that the doors be on the side entrance, and that was kind of missed, and now we're sorting through it now, you know, years later. I, I don't want that to happen.
We are so close.
Yeah.
Everything you say makes me really feel uncomfortable. You're not helping yourself or the cause of moving this forward.
Let, let's continue to, to talk about the specifics of, of of, of conditions and whether there are, and, and I, I understand your point, Mr. Barsky, about, about certainty and
And, and Madam Chair, if I may, just, Daniel, I'll do first draft of the resolution, I'll circulate it to our own staff and to Chris, and we'll massage it, and we'll get it in a form that everybody is good with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could I ask David? Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, I like what Dan was saying about that we would not reduce what's currently proposed on the end elevation, and that we would, as to Daniel's point, I think goals, setting goals are good, that we would look or attempt to increase that ratio based upon, you know, plan redesigns.
Right.
And could I ask for David's input on any specific language that you feel would be helpful in terms of the, the sides, the side units?
Yeah, I mean, we'll all get a chance to actually review the resolution. You know, we, we have to vote on it. So, I will certainly look at it at that time. If it's proper for me to look at the resolution prior to that, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, we usually don't. In fact, we never circulated to the board, boards in, both, both in Princeton and my other towns in advance, just because when you have so many people involved, it becomes much more complicated to get things done, particularly.
So, well, not with the intent to edit by committee, but just for his eyes.
Yeah.
But, that, I, I mean, I, I don't want to give myself a special status that I may think I deserve, but may not be legal, so.
I'll let you take a peek at my copy, David.
And if we could, could include in that, just, I, I don't want to forget those, those windows off to the side on the side. There, there really needs to be, I don't know how you would I, I don't feel the need for something specific.
The left-hand side.
Other than some attention should be given to those windows, and I, I feel like Mr. Green has a good sense of what, what needs, how they could be improved.
I already did a sketch. It's on my desktop.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, the whole So, you know, like, we've already touched on everything that I'm concerned about, and it's just a question of getting it into the, into the resolution.
Right, and into the plan. Anything else? This is a, a minor thing compared with others that we've talked about, but I really do want to thank the applicant for changing the fence from white plastic to cedar. I really really appreciate that very much, and, and the, and the picnic tables as well. I think they'll be used and appreciated. And and just in general, and with your interest and openness to working with us on, on these things. I think we all, we all want the same great project to happen. Are there other? Anything else that anybody wants to raise?
Jim Kamalek mentioned the sign, the sign.
I'm sorry, yep.
Jim Kamalek mentioned the sign variance. I think that's on the list that we just referenced, but he wanted to be sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's one of the four on the list.
Uh, thank you, Madam. I apologize for interrupting.
No, no problem.
I, I could go through all the memos and just identify for the board what, what should be conditions. I don't know that I need to do that, and as I go over it with, with Justin and Dan, if there are things that they disagree with me on, they think should be added or should be deleted, you know, we, we can do it that way. And certainly, the board will get the, the chance when it comes back to it to make any changes at once.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that approach. You know, incorporating the, the the conditions that are set forth in the memos and those that we've talked about tonight. If you want to read, you know, the the wording you've jotted down about the specifics of the road and architectural related conditions, you know, that's great, but as to the ones that are in the, you know, suggested in the memos, unless the applicant wants to point to any that they refuse or dispute, then I think we can
No dispute.
Assume nothing in dispute. You're okay with all of them, Mr. Tar?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'll just say, I think we already did hear Jerry's wording for the condition on the road.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I'm comfortable with that, and
Yeah.
I think that there's so much floating out there right now regarding the condition for the facade modifications. I think, I think we should let him gather it, you know, gather his thoughts and, and draft something rather than try and do it on the fly, because there's
So, I'm ready to make a motion.
Excellent, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions, which are a agreement between four parties, Edens, the municipality of Princeton, Wind Development Company, I guess it's five, actually, Barsky, the Barsky Company Corporation, and Toll Brothers on the sequencing and cost sharing of the connector road between Turhune and the shopping center work with the, between the applicant and Princeton's planning staff on improvement of the facade and side units in keeping with what we've discussed tonight. If I need to be more specific, Jerry, let me know.
No, I think it, I think it's right on the money.
And granting, I think it's four variances, height, the
Existing grade.
solids and, solids and voids, the sign.
And, and the fourth, the story.
Right, thought I said that. Yeah. Anything else?
The, the two waivers with, with respect to the
And the two, the two waivers, which
And the solar.
And the solar ready.
Right.
Thank you, Freddie.
Yeah.
And any other conditions that have been agreed upon within the reports?
Right.
So, Council President Sax has moved, Mr. Cohen?
Could I also ask the Landscape Subcommittee be asked to review the Magnolia locations? I saw that there were a couple of tentative locations on the plan, but I think that needs a little bit more work. So, you know, accepting the three as a replacement for the two, but I, I'd like to have Landscape Subcommittee review the exact placement of the Magnolias.
Thanks.
As is often the case, the Environmental Commission had a lengthy memorandum with some aspirational suggestions. Again, when I said that we comply with the particulars, it's the specific items that we've discussed tonight.
Okay. So, we have a motion? I'm sorry.
I, I was just going to say to David's point about the Landscape Committee, I, I if, for whatever reason, in, you know, I mean, we did hope, it, it's very sad that we're losing those mature trees. It's always sad to lose mature trees. But if, for whatever reason, in creating and replacing them with new Magnolias, if for some reason the new placement with that particular type of tree doesn't work, I would be open to considering some alternate recommendation for a tree with the preference
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. Uh, David, for the, the Landscape Committee review, it wouldn't just be the location of the, the three new Magnolias, it would be the whole landscape plan. Correct?
I, I mean,
That's what we usually do.
We usually do. I'm not sure what, what all is up in the air.
Yeah.
I mean, it seemed like the rest of it. There isn't much dispute about it, but if there, certainly if there's anything yet to be resolved about the planting plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'm okay with the substitution of the evergreens that Dan weighed in on. And, but I, I am curious about the plant mix for the for the bio-retention and that kind of thing, not to, you know, second guess or anything like that, just, just out of interest. So, maybe we can look at that as well.
Yeah, you want that all pinned down.
Yeah. So, we have a motion from Council President Sax. Is there a second?
Second, oh, David.
Nat?
Nat, you're, you raised your hand.
I never want to
That's okay. It's, uh, okay, so moved by, by Ms. Sax, seconded by Mr. Bodikheimer. Uh, Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Aye.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Perlmutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Everybody, Mr. Barsky, all of you from Toll, Mr. Chmalik, Mr. Tar. Thank you for everything. And we look forward, look forward to, you know, making these refinements and and seeing your, your project happen.
Madam Chair, I believe there is a formality?
Uh, yes, that, that is, that falls to Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, so I, I was going to say, Nat, anyone is welcome to move or second anything in this meeting, except move to adjourn.
Mr. Tar, are you seconding that motion or just saying goodbye?
I'm seconding and good night.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it.
Bye.
See you next week. Special meeting on the eleventh.
Yep.
Good night.
Have a good night.